Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the business meeting for the Tacoma School Board of Directors, Thursday, July 9th, 2020. General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Von Wright.
Here.
And Director Keating.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All righty, thank you. Item number three, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move adoption of the agenda.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion here is five zero. Item number four, superintendent's report. We have three items this evening. We'll hear from the superintendent. The first will be the 2020-2021 school year structure update. Then we'll get an update on our bond. And then we've heard a lot from the public regarding the renaming of Wilson and Jason Lee. And the board has been in communication with the superintendent. She's going to give us an update on her recommended next steps. We are, we continue to be in a virtual environment. The governor yesterday extended his emergency proclamation. We're in phase two in Tacoma, so we still have to operate virtually. You'll see our agenda and our procedures this evening aligned accordingly. With that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for an update on the 2020-2021 school year structure update.
Thank you. I'm also going to ask permission, just because we have a lot of comments about our paraprofessionals tonight. So I'm going to ask Lisa to give just a brief update about what we're doing with our paras, if that's okay.
Yep, that would be.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're going to start with a slide. We're going to show you some of the slides we showed you last time regarding our school structure. So if Tom can put that up for us, we're reopening our schools. And the main thing we want you to know is that we, again, if you look at the next slide, we're really concentrating on making sure that this opening is safe and that it's within our space constraints and it's, you know, that we're going to be able to fit students in the classroom safely and that we still will stay, we'll talk about physical distancing and maintain that. And then also it has to stay within our fiscal constraints. So those are the operations that we're operating under. So just a little preamble, one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is that we know that this guidance and opinions are changing on a daily basis. So we hear something every day that says, oh, you know, the new guidance is five feet or the new guidance is three feet. So we just want you to know we are listening to that. And there's kind of this national and global stage. If I'm asleep, if I stay awake till two o'clock in the morning, it's often that I'm reading these little scenarios from superintendents all over the country. And they're, they're hard to read because they're sad, but they show that we're in this, you know, that we've got good company around the country because everybody is struggling with some of these things. And we get conflicting advice about social distancing, about masks, about face-to-face instruction. And so we are working through that and coming up with the best work we can based on the guidance that we're getting from our state. The other thing is we know that there's a lot of ideas out there about what this looks like. And we want you to know that, you know, locally, we have surveyed our families, our staff, our students more than once to get feedback and to use that data to drive our opening. That's critical. And like our board, our board has been listening to different thoughts and suggestions and concerns and all the things that they have to address. And I think that's really, really important. And we're trying to use that data to make sure we use it to, on our school plans. Please note too, that we're looking to see what other districts do. We have talked to districts that are life-size to us and districts that are smaller and everyone to make sure. And what we're learning is that we're, you know, while there may be some variations because some buildings have, some districts may have extra building left over that they're not using or whatever, but we find that we're in line with most of those. And so we want you to know that we're listening or paying attention and that we're not finished giving you an opportunity to be heard. We're planning a new set of leveled webinars of elementary, middle, and high school so that you can hear more specifically what's going on with your school and what it looks like. And, you know, ask your questions and, you know, and we'll address some of the suggestions that we have, that we have received. We're also surveying our own employees on their ability to work in the workplace. There are so many moving parts to this. And also, we certainly want to involve and listen and respond to our TEA partner, our TEA and our other unions because we've got to make sure that we share this and that we, you know, work on this together. And I have to say, I talked to my, you know, my 38-year-old son last night who has a first grader. And he was in, he had just sat down for a webinar with his school and they had told him, you know, what school is going to look like. And he broke up and he was in tears. And of course, when he went into tears, I went into tears. And so I'm trying to show him and talk to him about some of the issues that we're facing as we go through this. So we just, I just want to make sure that everybody is patient and understands that we have the best intentions and we're working with our students and we'll give you that we are listening to your feedback and we'll continue to listen. If you look at the next slide, it shows what principles we're going to stick with and we're sticking with these. The number one is, you know, we, you know, we're going to follow the science and health department guidelines that we get from Pierce County, our Pierce County Health Department. And as it changes, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust and change to. We certainly know that we've got to reduce person-to-person contact. I think we're starting to see it in our, you know, in our everyday lives and grocery stores and in doctors' offices that, you know, people are adapting to this, you know, the six-feet rule. We're trying to, we're working to reduce the amount of students and staff that are on similars that are in sight. We're doing that at CAB. This week was the first time when we reduced, you know, we made sure that we only have about 50% of people at CAB on a daily basis. So we're working on those. We want to improve our blended learning elements and requirements. We know we have work to do about that. I am totally reminded every day about how important it is that we prioritize the most important content and then also that we infuse social emotional learning on our budget webinars. We've certainly heard, excuse me, our public talk about how important it is be able to recognize trauma in our students because we're going to have students that are coming back. I mean, one of the things my son said that broke my heart is that my grandson Dylan has a tendency to react to things that are, you know, that he hasn't seen before. And my sense is I just don't know what will happen when he walks into a class and sees, you know, all these other kids in masks. And then I read an article about a teacher who said, you know, my, my key to making sure my kids learn is getting up close and personal with them. And I just don't know what it's going to be like when they can't see three-quarters of my face. So we know this isn't easy and we're going to continue to work on it. We're going to adjust and we're going to add roles as necessary and we're going to remain functional and financially responsible. And so now what, what we're planning for hasn't changed. Those items that you see there, we know we're looking at all these different things about, they kind of go back over those guiding principles. The thing that I want you to make sure is we still are on looking at computer devices for students, starting with high school and have an order in for middle school and we'll continue to work until we get that K-12 so that we're ready to make that flip if we end up having to go back home. Really looking at a strong learning management system, working with community partners, knowing that, you know, that meals are going to be important, looking at transportation. And then all those committees there are ones that have been formed to look, you know, to look at it. And certainly continuing our effort to get feedback from our, from our parents through the slide. On the next slide, we played the Chris Reitdahl tape last week. So, I mean, last board meeting, we're not going to play it again, but know that it's on our website. And if you, you know, we're always talking about state guidance. So Chris Reitdahl, Reitdahl is the state superintendent. And so just know that if you want a real close look at some of the things he's suggesting, you can go and look at that, that site. I'm going to let Josh talk, Dr. Garcia, start with what we've learned and then transition into that elementary, middle, and high school plan. And again, when this is all, when this is over, when this, this part of the presentation is over, you'll still have questions and you'll still have worries. And I also, we are working to make sure that you have more confidence that we are looking at all these items. Dr. Garcia?
Thank you, Superintendent Santana. So a couple of the things that we have seen that are still there that students and staff are going to be required to wear face coverings unless there's a medical condition that prevents from wearing one. So we're really encouraging families and staff to start to build that stamina of wearing face masks. And then obviously the governor came out this last week and made that a new expectation in Washington State. Districts still need to plan for the six-foot social distancing framework. And that's not only for schools, but that's for all community as well. And so we're looking at those six-foot social distancing frameworks in every learning space and workspace for our, our, our staff as well. We want as much face-to-face instruction as we safely can possibly do. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at. Some new research has come out and said that, you know, our youngest students are probably our most vulnerable in the, in the virtual environment. We also heard the superintendent mention that we've had a couple of surveys. The first survey, I believe, had over 15,000 respondents. Our latest survey had over 9,000, shorter window of opportunity to provide survey input. But we're getting large sample sizes and hearing from our families. And that's something that we heard from our families as well is that our youngest students need more face-to-face time. Virtual is harder for them, just with the digital device, as well as their vulnerability when they're not in school. Next slide, please, Tom. We've been digging through the guidance of OSPI and there's some things that we really want the community and to start to understand that there will be some classes that may not be able to be offered or they will be modified. They may only be in a virtual environment because they're too, it's too constricting to run them in, in close contact. It's likely that we won't have field trips or student assemblies or other large gatherings in the same way, at least to start the fall. That may change as the science changes and the way our community responds. There may not be school-wide parent meetings or spirit nights and things among those activities. We know that there is going to be some role modification and we need to make sure that we are protecting our staff as well. And so a lot of times we may have staff that rotate through different classrooms. And that's not going to be the same opportunity coming to fall, not only for the students' protection, but for the individual staff members' protection. So we're looking at, we might have to suspend or make modification to activities such as high risks, such as choir and other classes and activities that require students to remove their face coverings. So we're, we're, no final decisions have been made, but we're looking at the possibilities and ways to modify those. And then we're going to be looking to staff will have to teach different classes in order to support students attending face-to-face. This could result in some staff teaching out of their endorsement areas. We've taken a lot of pride to try to work to support that, making sure that staff are teaching in those endorsed areas. But as we look at the space analysis, we may need more teachers teaching more or not more kids, actually less kids in smaller spaces. And so we're all going to have to step up and think about how we do that in a safe way. Next slide, please, Tom. We, we recognize in order to do the most face-to-face instruction, we're going to have to use some larger classrooms first in order to support K-2 in our elementary schools. And so that may mean that students are in a different-sized classroom in order to have more students in that face-to-face environment and that six-foot social distancing. We might have to provide multi-age classrooms in order to provide face-to-face instruction for students. So multi-age, oftentimes we look at that in the grades three, four, or five. We might have to look at that in different grade levels. High schools, middle schools oftentimes do multi-age. And why that's really critical is that will help us determine if we're able to offer additional days in certain grade levels. We know space is going to be tight. So we're luxury, we have these amazing facilities and there is space within those buildings. But we have space that is designed in small, medium, and large areas. And so we're going to need to really be looking at what are those space options? And then if our families don't select online options, that will impact our number of face-to-face instruction. And then the ability to implement screening protocols will impact the number of students on campus at once. So the counties and health departments in King, Snohomish, and Pierce County are trying to work together on common screening, common guidance. That guidance still has not been finalized. And so we're looking at what are our options for screening protocols. But that will have a variance on the number of kids that are on campus at once. Next slide, please, Tom. So let's talk a little bit about what we've heard from our community and how some of the adjustments that we have been made or will make. Next slide. So there will be a complete online option for students at the elementary level. Our survey data came back and there was a significant number of families that said, yes, I am interested in an online approach. So that will be students attend school virtually at all different levels, K through 12. That will still be with a teacher. There will be a teacher that's guiding that. That is not complete independent learning. There will be teachers that will be guiding and teaching. And then there will be online curriculum where students are constructing and responding. Students and family will have a support center within the district where they need support for both technology and then how to do distance learning and potentially accessing curriculum. That will be done by appointment in order to practice social distancing protocols. So we'll have both a physical space to do support for online and then we'll have online options as well. Next slide, please. We've made some adjustments in our recommendations for our hybrid. There will be a combination of in-person, class time, virtual, and distance learning. We're looking at K-1 as well as possibly creating K-2. Those students, knowing that they are, are most vulnerable in the sense of what the research is saying and what we've heard from our community, they will be going four days a week with one day of distance learning. Grades three through five will be in an A-B alternative schedule with two-person, two days in-person, forgive me, repetitive in there, and then three days of distance learning. We are also examining the idea and the concept of self-contained classrooms being offered more days. And so we're looking at that. So self-contained special education programs where they are naturally already in a cohort, we can bring them on campus more and deliver more instruction. We continue to examine and our supports for special education, McKinney-Vento, English language learners, and foster care students. But those supports will be dependent on the model. And as we get closer to fine-tuning the model, there'll be a lot more work that needs to be done around the implementation. There will be a suspension or limiting of certain programs in the face-to-face instruction. We will start to examine and identify what those are based on that health department's guidance. And then we will be able to start to communicate those. We are still looking at extended learning opportunities. That's the before and after-school programming with the Tacoma Whole Child Partners and trying to provide additional supports for families during that. There will be curriculum alignment to support families with distance learning. So there will be a schedule for the distance learning days. There will be supports that are provided and it will be very structured in the sense of here's what your child needs to do during this time. And then we'll be working to communicate things like what does it look like a day in a life for an elementary student? What does it look like for a day in a life for, how to support an elementary student as a parent and then also as a staff member? Next slide, please. And our middle school options for families, next slide. Once again, they'll have the same options for the virtual, a complete online option for students. So they will still be Tacoma Public School students, still have access to the supports, but they will be doing, they won't be taking a physical seat inside of a classroom. One subtlety that I would like to explain, and you'll see this in some further work in the board reading, we're going to ask families to commit to that for a set period of time. This will be very critical for our ability to plan classroom spaces in a social distance space. If it doesn't work after that set period of time, then we'll look at flexibilities and options. But in all of our middle, or excuse me, our online options, there will be a registration process for this. And we'll be working to do that in the next couple of weeks because that will, once again, have an impact on the number of days that we're able to provide students that choose the face-to-face hybrid model. Next slide, please. Common theme with both the middle school and the high schools that we heard from our families is one day was not going to be enough. So we worked creatively and we continued to do space analysis and really striving for this A-B alternative schedule, taking half of your classes on one day in face-to-face and the other half on another day face-to-face and then being supported, once again, in a structured distance learning model. We've talked about some of the additional supports that will be happening once the model is finalized. And then, once again, self-contained classrooms being offered more days on campus. And once we, again, finalize the model, we'll be able to clearly articulate how many of those are. We're really striving for that four-day-a-week model for the self-contained at all the different levels as well. You'll see further communications around athletics and activity opportunities. And start times will be coming out and the communication of those start times for high school and middle school will be adjusted based on WIA. But we will also be looking to try to maintain our approach to support those activities. Once again, there will be programming that will be either suspended or limited because of what that means to be done in a face-to-face environment. Curriculum, once again, will be there to support families in the distance learning. It won't just be independent. Go do this. There will be structured activities. There will be a learning management system where students will be required to check in, submit their work. And then we're, once again, looking in that A-B model, potentially future classrooms in week segments. And as decisions haven't been quite finalized, but you'll probably likely see a final recommendation of an A-B model. Next slide, please. And for our high school options for families, we've talked about this high school online. Students, when they enter this, will still enter and receive their own personal high school diploma. So even if you are a student and you are going into this, you still will, if you are a Wilson-Ram or a Lincoln Abe or a Foss Falcon, you'll still get your Foss Falcon, Lincoln Abe, and Wilson High School diploma. And we will continue to refine this. We saw a significant number, both middle school and high school families in our sample say that they're still interested in this. And so this is an option that we're still moving forward with. Next slide, please. We still want to let families know that if you're working and you're planning on taking Running Start, it's our understanding that higher education will also be offering Running Start and, but do not be surprised if your Running Start experience is 100% virtual. That's what we're hearing from a lot of the higher ed institutions to start the fall. They may be in there or they may be shifting at some point to an online version. We will have opportunities for our Willie Stewart Academy and Fresh Start options. We want the families to know that if they're currently enrolled in those options or seeking those, those will still be viable options. And then it's our understanding that Pierce County Skill Center, although that is not a Tacoma Public School program, will still be offered and we will still support kids that choose to go to that. Next slide, please. Once again, very similar to the middle school, we're trying to create as much K-12 alignment as possible. We really heard that from our families, a lesson learned in the spring and then through our surveys. It's very important to them that they have some consistency. And you saw in our guiding principles, one of those was to try to keep families on similar schedules. So we're really looking at that in the school structure amongst the three different groups or different age groups. So I'm not going to go through all of these at once because they're pretty repetitive to the middle school and combination of elementary. Next slide, please. So what does learning look like? So here's this team of 14 educators that are working on, with the project manager to accomplish, what does this look like? We're trying to develop a hybrid learning guide, so virtual, blended, and face-to-face learning. What does it actually mean and what can a family expect? And then that's an opportunity for teachers also to deliver in a shared, consistent fashion. So there will be guiding principle, a shared glossary. You've heard terms like online learning, distance learning, remote learning. I can go on blended learning. So we've, that's been a challenge for our families and staff as we've gone through. So concreting a common language. And then details of the content, that prioritization. Partnering on popularizing academic content in the learning management system. So we've talked about this term, learning management, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the presentation. So there's actually a way that we can actually put lessons and content on a shared space that students and families can access. And so that there's a level playing field and consistency in there. Schoolology is actually the learning management system that we've chosen. There'll be curriculum maps as the foundation for courses. We'll create high-level lessons by grading content to upload in the system. And that way, the teachers will have a starting place. It is not a, a system that will be 180 days. All students will do this on their learning days. Teachers will still have the flexibility to bring their creativity and innovation to make meaning of the lessons that they're doing in the face-to-face world. But these will be supporting materials that teachers will not have to also create new lessons all independently for the distance learning time. We're working to provide professional learning supports like high-quality professional growth and virtual blended learning guidance, creating educator PD and course development within the learning management system, and then developing the professional learning that's going out there. You'll see that, you'll, Board of Directors, you'll get a series of policies as we look through and see what we need. You've charged us, what are the policy gaps in order to do this? So you'll see updates on academic access policies and then procedures for virtual learning. Next slide, please. So what is a learning management system? It's a comprehensive cloud-based learning management system accessible on any device. And so even if our students are not logged on a school computer, but they are at home and they have access, they'll be able to do that. This is not just a temporary tool for COVID. It puts us in a better place to serve kids. We know that even post-COVID, hopefully that students, if this is a better learning style for them, will have an opportunity to learn online as well as be supported with common and consistent expectations where they can see the lessons and access those lessons. So even if their teacher's not there, they can go in and check it. And so that's a really critical tool as we move forward. Teachers can provide fully hosted lessons to classes or small groups, including multimedia, written directions, whole-class video conferencing, assign and receive work from Office 365 apps. They can also provide feedbacks to individual students. They can poll their class. They can assess their students. They can assign a grade. They can send a message to students or parents. And so there may be even repetitive apps that we have in our system. We're going to get Schoolology up and running. And then as we look, if there's other applications in our suite that we no longer need, we'll pull those down so it'll be less confusing for families. But this is kind of a one-stop shopping place. And then staff can use it for collaboration and co-construction lessons and professional development as well. Next slide, please. So the technology is really critical. We have learned this over the course of time in the, in the COVID experience. And in a lot of ways, COVID has helped us start to break down the digital divide. So what do we have? I'm going to start with the right-hand side of the column. What have we completed? You'll see that right as COVID started, we jumped right on this and we said we need to get computers. And so we placed our first order of 2,400 computers on March 20th, a second order on April 20th, the 3,785, and then a final submission of 5,185 laptops on 6/20. We've implemented an asset management tools. So how will we track these computers? We've been working on a system to do that. We've implemented a remote internet filtering. So how are we ensuring that our students are safe when they're using those computers in the World Wide Web? We've implemented a remote support tools so that students and their families that are on the computers, but they have a question, they're struggling to access something, there'll be a support system that they can reach out remotely and get that. And then we're able to actually get in and remotely support the device through management tools. And then we've tried this and conducted a pilot test for student devices and tools the last part of May and throughout June. So here's what's in progress. Dell is our laptops that we've been working with and kids are familiar with. We'll be distributing those in the laptops from August 20th really through September 20th. The existing high school laptops will be moved down to The existing high school laptops will be moved down to the middle schools. So you'll see this. Middle school students won't get new laptops per se, but they will start to have access to laptops because we'll move the distributions in there. The new laptops, we know will be, feel confident that they'll be ready by December, but that doesn't mean that middle school students won't be able to access laptops earlier throughout the year, early in September. And then we'll be redistributing our existing laptops from the middle schools into high schools into the elementary world. And then by the beginning of the calendar year, we will have enough laptops in the system through to address all students' grades 1 through 12 in a one-to-one environment. We are, just got off the phone again with our community partners, the Foundation for Tacoma Students is still very committed to supporting the internet access within the community and galvanizing the community around how to shore up those access barriers if you don't have internet. With that said, we're also designing systems in the hybrid model and time in the day for students to make sure that they have what they need in order to access the distance learning days. So even if a student doesn't have internet access, then we will plan for time for teachers to work to distribute the information and the content so that they can work on it in a remote setting via the device. Next slide, please. So the board asked for some pros and cons of the model or opportunities and gaps. And so I'd like to share with you what the staff has started to identify. Some of the opportunities with the hybrid and the the proposed model of four days for self-contained as well as our youngest learners. So we're really trying to, OSPI put out this terminology, support with equity justice. Your face-to-face instruction the most you can. And so our equity justice is really around our youngest and our self-contained learners as well as our McKinney Vento, our ELL, Foster Kid and students. We haven't talked a lot about ELL because we are going, we're still in the middle of revising that. But we do plan on providing additional supports and we'll be able to describe those at a later date. We think that there's an opportunity, although this is a worldwide pandemic, this is a health issue, not a school issue. The schools are revolving and revising and adapting to this worldwide pandemic. We do believe that there is a digital learning divide that is going to start to, we're going to start to be able to break down secondary students as well as elementary students having increased opportunities to safely learn in the digital world. We're seeing that higher education is rapidly changing. And students are going to be in a place from here on forward where they're going to be taking classes online. Adults have been doing that in training for a long time, career training in college. We're, we're going to have an opportunity to prepare kids better for that. I've mentioned the device gaps will be closed. The opportunity is to provide safe social distancing practices at all levels in this proposed models. I mentioned again, the additional face-to-face of self-contained classrooms. So what are self-contained classrooms? We'll bring you back some of those. These are medically fragile kids that may be in a self-contained classrooms or students that need extra support. We know that there will be an opportunity to really focus in on curriculum opportunities, although we're, know that we might have to suspend certain programs for a while, doesn't mean that we won't be able to bring them back. And then this idea of a common learning platform for families and staff. And not just within a school, but across schools. And so, you know, as families, we know that I get used to something at the elementary level and then something may change at a middle school. We don't have to do that anymore. We can have a common platform. So we're not fighting through, how do I help my, support my child with the content? As well as how do I support my child with the strategy of distance learning? Next slide, please. Here's some gaps that we know are going to be there. Extra curricular opportunities may be limited for students. That's really tugging on a lot of us. It's tugging on community members. It's tugging on staff members. It's tugging on. And I mean, all kinds of staff members from there. And then even as individual board members, you've expressed this really concern of how do we, we know kids thrive, not just with the rigor of school and the academics, but the holistic approach to engaging them through a variety of lenses. We know that some programming will be suspended or eliminated in the face-to-face instruction due to social distancing. We know that the A B schedule will still need support with distinct learning elements. We know that we cannot just say in distance learning independently, Johnny, Jimmy, Sally, that you're on your own. There will be structured times that students will need to focus their learning and be expected at a whole new level that will not be like the spring. We know that traditional activities like assemblies will have to look differently. We know there's tremendous value in honoring and engaging in large groups, but those will have to look differently. We know staff will have to be limited in classrooms to maximize space. As we're doing that space analysis and we're required to provide a space map for each of those learning spaces, we really have to make sure that everyone in that, in that learning space has a dedicated environment that they can practice social distancing. We know classroom rotations will need to be limited, which may change programming. We know that there still is a gap with the community internet access. And although we're optimistic, we know that right now there may not be enough computer devices for all the students at the start of the year. And so that gap, we're really working at closing as fast as we can. Next slide, please. So what's next? We're going to continue to get feedback. We're going to continue to work with OSPI and the Health Department to examine guidance around PPE and distancing. We're going to continue our space capacity analysis. We're going to launch our online school registration. We're going to prepare physical spaces in schools and classrooms based on that six-foot social distancing. We're going to provide ongoing updates to staff and families. Next slide, please. We're going to prepare and deploy computer devices for high school, middle school, and possibly some elementary as we start. We're going to install and train a new learning management system. We're going to continue to organize technology support for students, families and staff. And then we're going to revise transportation routes and food services to meet this hybrid and online approach. Next slide, please. This is our update as of July 9th. We will be working in the next two weeks to bring you a final recommendation in July 23rd. The board will be looking at two steps. One is the opportunity to approve a face-to-face hybrid approach. And that's really critical that we finalize this. Families, we've received some comments around, please help us get to a plan sooner so we can start a plan. For what does that mean? Community partners need to help us with the opportunities for distance learning where there are students not in school, that they may need to provide additional daycare or day camps. They need us to finalize those plans and staff need us to get there and finalize those plans so they can plan and see that is accordingly. And then the second phase will be is our continuous learning plan template that the board will have to adopt, and that will come later in August. That is a combination of the work that you're looking at tonight and the final recommendations, as well as what is our plan if school has to close again? We still have not gotten the template for that plan from OSPI that is scheduled to come out sometime next week. So we, we can't really give you an update of what are the elements of those plans yet. At this point, I think we're ready for questions or comments, Superintendent.
Ready. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Vice President Cobb.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, can you clarify for me or say what your current thinking is about how long these proposed options are for? Like, as we know, things, information continues to evolve, new insights are coming about transitioning to various phases. So are we thinking that these are the options for the whole year? Are these options term by term? Or what's our thinking right now about when we would pivot back to more traditional model? When the, the science says it's okay to? How long are we? How long are these plans for?
Right now, that's a great question. Right now, we're planning and the guidance we've had is for the school year. That doesn't mean that we can't pivot if the science changes, vaccinations, a variety of other things. But there, there would need to be some time for that. So what we haven't been able to see is what is, what determines post-COVID in there? And so, once again, we'll have to look at that guidance from the Health Department and OSPI that says you can change your models now. But everything we've heard right now is planned for the 2021 school year.
Okay. And then also with the option to go fully online, are there, do you all know of or are there internet requirements related to bandwidth or connection speed that families would need to be sure are in place in order to support effective use of the online system? And if families want to exercise the online option but don't currently have internet, do we have any resources available to support them in getting internet access if they choose that option?
So the first one is we're not aware of any specific bandwidth requirements. We've looked at several different options of how to deliver that curriculum. I would say that we all experienced this though, is your, your customer service experience will have a lot to do with your bandwidth, right? And so there will be obviously a lot of frustrations. I have that old commercial of the turtles in my mind with bandwidth. And I, so I'll just leave it at that. We have put in requests with the Pierce Smith County Management, Emergency Management to continue to examine what does, what is the plan for internet access within our community through CARES Act funds. The state does not plan on providing any additional resources to school districts for computer device internet access at this point, from an OSPI lens. And so there will not be additional funds coming our ways to support that. This is why the work of the Foundation for Tacoma Students is so critical. We will work in partnership if there are gaps there. And there may be resources, but there is not an identified budget that is opportunity for that. It just depends on, there may be grant resources that come our way, a variety of other things that come.
Yeah, I have a couple more questions. I'll try to be brief, but I do see Director Bondright's hand. So I'm wondering if she wanted to respond to the specific internet access comment.
Yeah, I had, and I'm not sure where I saw this or heard this, but I thought that Reineer Connect had promised to provide years' worth of free internet to families that didn't have it in the Tacoma School District area. Am I, is anybody else, has anybody else heard that or is?
So the Reineer Correct has been working with the Foundation for Tacoma Students. I do not believe it's all. I think there is an opportunity for vouchers and families can apply through that. And they're working to, with the Foundation for Tacoma Students in a very generous way to try to remove some of those barriers. There's complexities within that and service providers, a variety of other pieces. But they are working with the Foundation for Tacoma Students.
Thank you. My other question slash comment is just wondering about when we, if students and families choose the hybrid option and are going to be in school on some A B kind of schedule, will there, I'm assuming that, and I'm guessing that there will be some process or opportunity for families to ask for modifications, like can we be on the A schedule rather than B schedule? If that's assigned rather than one that people get to choose. So if there is some process for families to ask for a modification, I'm just wondering what the system will be and if there will be an opportunity for us to use that to collect information. I, I just think that, I mean, any opportunity we can use to capitalize on that transaction of communication would be good. And when I say information, I mean, if a family is requesting a switch because they have childcare issues, just knowing more about who, how many people have childcare issues. Or if they're requesting the switch because just, if there are some other data points that we've been interested in related to the COVID experience and being able to identify the right supports, I just, it's just as a comment, just ask that you all think about these opportunities, those opportunities to collect more information about how folks are responding to all that's happening right now. Of my last, oh, go ahead.
Just to real quickly respond in there. So Superintendent is very wise in saying there are a lot of moving parts to this. So I just want to give you a little bit of detail. We actually have to go into every classroom. We have to figure out the square footage, which we have maps, and we put in seating charts to figure out how many kids that can fit in there. And then when we think about keeping kids on common schedules for family supports, there are going to be situations where, whether it's an alpha list, we're going to try to do our best we can. Those classrooms will be filled to the capacity. Now, there is always some exceptions to every rule. There's unique situations. But understand that we are going to be filled to the capacity in order to determine how many kids that we can fit in that space. If there is opportunity and flexibility, absolutely. There may be exceptions. But we will not be in a place where we're able to survey families and say, which days would you like? We will be in a place where we're saying for transportation routes, a variety of other things, here's the days. And we've been very successful working with families. There's always a situation where we've got to address it. And we're creative and we'll be committed to that. One of the things that we've learned in a lot of our platforms is even with the data that we are collecting is you have to find a place to store that data. In a lot of our platforms, there's not just a, even this terminology of a data warehouse that we've shared with you. Those are each little data streams inside of there. They have to be a hosting place. So as we collect data, we're really struggling with this. So where do we store that? What does that format look like? For what purpose? For how long in there? And so the next few weeks is going to be extremely nimble. And, you know, we'll continue to get better at those things. But really what we need to get into is helping families understand what's coming. That urgency of this is what's coming. Here's the schedule. Does this not work for you? Let's talk about what are our options in that situation. And that's where we're really trying to prioritize our efforts to help them, they see what that opportunity looks like. On the reverse side of this is we may get a lot of families that choose the online option and we are able to bring in more flexibility. And that's something that we're committed to doing as well.
Okay, then I'll just be, my last one. I had a couple others, but I'll just ask one other. I, I don't know. I know that in recent school renovations, I've seen a lot. The elementary school experience I remember was my little individual single desk. And in our renovations and remodels, we moved to more tables that are movable and different furniture that facilitates working in groups. So have you all considered at this point, how, do we have an opportunity with our future, the projects that are underway now to think differently about furniture and furniture configurations to allow for more, even more flexibility as we try to create social distance and bring kids back in various groupings?
Yeah, so the social distancing guiding is six feet. Tables are still functional. We have, you know, architects across the nation have given us great opportunities to say, so if you have desks, here's what it looks like. If you have tables, here's what it looks like in these maps. And so, you know, the other side of this is, you know, we all, I, I had that panic moment too of like, we won't have enough desks. Well, in reality is, in the A B schedule, we're going to have to be pulling desks out of classrooms. And so we're going to be needing to set up these classrooms because if there's a classroom that has tables and we're not able to maximize the space, we need to start to put desks in those space. And so I would say it's safe to say that Morris and Chris, as they think about new buildings, they're right in the thick of COVID in design and their, Bose and Bernie are, and I don't want to steal all their thunder, are, we're going to open up this fall. Those ones won't change, but as we think about their, their, everything to even how are we collecting data? And where do we store data on space and physical locations is right at the top of their, their mind.
Thanks. Well, I'll wrap up because I know I've taken a bunch of time, but just on the point that I asked previously about collecting data, I totally hear your point that we have to have somewhere to store it. But my main concern was more like if a family comes and says, we can't do the online option because I really have to be at work. And the hybrid option is really tough too, because those two or three days, I really don't have any other childcare option. I hope that we use those engagement opportunities as opportunities to connect those families to our community partners, connect them to whatever resources, communities and schools or other. So that was my main point in thinking about that data. So just as we, families who are struggling, can we be thinking about leveraging our partnerships to connect them to resources?
Absolutely. And thank you for bringing that. That is actually one of our work groups is a community partner work group. And so you have educators and a few leads within the community partners that are identifying, so what are partnerships looking like in a COVID hybrid approach? Everything from childcare to mental health, to engagement enrichment, to, and they're, they're building out these approaches. And then what we're, our goal is to not only be able to provide those resources to staff to make those connections into families, but to post them online to say, here are some opportunities within the community if you're struggling with childcare or transportation. And really try to, especially during this place, in the absence of an intermediary, if you will. you will, really trying to help bridge that gap of communications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Director Leon?
Thanks. I think there are a lot of excellent points made by Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. I just want to just review a couple of them for the public to re-understand that the plans that are being made have to be able to pivot and change quickly. And it sounds like with these, the learning management system we have, with the one-to-one devices, our community can be reassured, pivot. Is it going to be the perfect scenario for every family? It's probably not. When you say perfect, because that was probably five days a week in person, we're not doing that. So as everyone's heard, the intent is really to do the best we can with the resources we have. And we heard that those survey results or the number of patients, the number of families that responded to the surveys was really high, seven to nine thousand families is quite high compared to our normal surveys. So the community is, we're hearing the voices, their, their viewpoints is making these decisions. There's going to be more time for feedback later, because I have heard from lots of constituents that they want to have more time for, to give ideas and give their feedback. So some of them may not know that it's happening and it's going to continue to happen. So really important that, that is, that is clear. I think the, we'll hear more in the future, English language learners and what that's going to look like, because I think that's an important piece as we think about all of our, all of our learners, there are groups that may need a little more or a different type of attention. The final plan coming in a couple of weeks, final, you know, in parentheses, obviously things can change. I think a few of the cons, you could also look at pros coming out of all those. There's limited numbers of classes sometimes, types of classes, there may not be as much choice. People are used to, there may not be three types of cooking class, or maybe one or something like that. I'm just giving an example, or so many choices. I think the quality is going to be, it just may not be as much choice like the choir and those type of extracurricular activities. That really just probably affects every family, every kid, almost every kid is in some kind of extracurricular activity. We know that's important for learning, and we're looking to our partners to help us with that. The W A I, heavy A I came up with some recommendations that I haven't read them all over yet, but they're, anyhow, trying to get some sports going in a safe manner. Interesting to see what that looks like. The limited space, I think you talked about classroom space and potential of limiting teachers or parent educators in the classroom. I think we also got to think of spaces of learning, because we may not be teaching classroom, right? There may be non-traditional rooms, arenas or areas or hallways used to teach as an example. And I think if we have the ability to move the learning space from one smaller bill, smaller classroom into something slightly larger that will allow for one more educator, maybe a parent educator to be there with a teacher, that way you get, you know, double the ratio of teaching instead of having, thinking of that educator as one extra body that can't be in there because there is a certain number. I think that we all should consider that and think about moving spaces, which I'm sure you're doing. The flexibility of family questions that Director Cobb is talking about, I think is important. Dr. Garcia has mentioned that there's, there's going to be some choice, not a myriad of choices with regard to if you choose an A or a B, but potentially maybe a family chooses to have a middle school student go to a different middle school in order to make it easier for their family to have the right schedule, elementary school students, or whatever the blend of your family is, you've got another one kid. So we're not going to be able to have people just change their mind, you know, on the dime, oh, this isn't working, I need to be able to come in now. If there's no space, there's no space for a certain amount, unless there is space, then we bring them in. So lots to consider. And I think the other piece that Superintendent talked about was the evolving science and the data around what, what is, is it six feet? I've heard from a lot of constituents and the medical community, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics is talking about three feet, Worth Health Organization talks about three, six, the CDC talks about six, and all that comes with different research and sometimes a lack of research and just kind of mantra without research. So we'd like to have a unified approach for the whole state, and there's no, yeah, but I think we also should evaluate what our own local health department has to, has to say about these, about these recommendations. Because if you go from six to three feet with everybody wearing a face mask and it's safe, then potentially that could help. But that's not something we are ready to do right now. We have to wait for more information. That's, that's it for now, thanks.
Just real quickly, President Hines, a couple of clarifying pieces. So in the spaces, we tried to mention this is, in order to, those K one, two classrooms, they will be taking up the largest learning spaces. In order to make sure that there's enough, not only physical space for them to operate within, but there's enough educators to cover those classes. So we will be looking at different spaces. We are restricted by some things, just so, you know, folks in their creative solutions, you know, we have to meet fire code opportunities, right? So we can't put kids in a classroom as a designated learning space, short periods of time, excuse me, in a hallway, not in a classroom, in a hallway, and in there. And so even in some of our newer schools, we have large learning spaces that blend a classroom and hallway, and so we're looking at those as innovative solutions. But I just, as we think through, just so as you go, there's, if we, even if we had, we have more spaces, we don't have enough educators that could operate and teach in a certified manner in those spaces. And those are critical elements to teaching and learning is to make sure that we are able to provide that. We know face-to-face is so critical, and part of that is making sure that teachers have access and students have access to that high-quality teacher as much as they can. So I just want to reemphasize your point, Director Leon, we are looking at those larger spaces. And so that may be, I hate to even say what kind of space that is, because that might, you know, get folks interpreting one way or the other, but that space analysis is doing just what you said. What are the largest learning spaces that we can operate in? How do we maximize those? And the point to this K two conversation, or K one possibly two, and we're optimistic about the two, is to say, in order to do that, we need to maximize the number of students that are in those spaces, in those large learning spaces first. And if we don't do it that way, we won't be able to offer four days of face-to-face instruction. The A B models, you're going to have about half of the kids in a class that you normally would. And so that often provides a lot of flexibility. And then in those situations, you know, you'll see different levels of ratio of support coming in.
Thank you. Director Bonbright, do you have any questions, any questions or comments?
I do. Well, first of all, thank you to Director Cobb and Directors Cobb and Leon, both asked great questions and ones that had been on my list. So I won't repeat, but I will say that I appreciate Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, all the hard work that the teams put in, and especially the recognition that our youngest students are thriving in those interpersonal environments. And I'm thrilled to hear that we're working on this four-day in-school for, and I'm pushing for that K two. So, because I really do think that these kids, you know, at the start of their education really need to get that one-on-one with teachers. So thanks for that. I also am pleased about the computers, and I know we've talked, that the board, I should say, has talked for years about whether we were a one-to-one school or not, district or not, and I guess we will be shortly. So that's exciting, because I do think teaching and allowing children to learn, you know, in a way that's, that's stretching their abilities all the time to be savvy tech-wise is going to be beneficial to their futures. So, and I'm hoping that the, and thank you again to the Foundation for Tacoma Students and other community partners that are working so hard to work on the connectivity issue, because I know that's critical. I had a couple of questions based on the presentation. One was, Dr. Garcia, you had said, oops, he just disappeared. Anyway, Dr. Garcia said that families would have, would have to commit and, for a period of time, but didn't say what that period of time was. And Director Cobb had said, well, you know, she had asked the question I thought was going to be that answer, but it was more that they did, we're looking at it for a full school year. So is the commitment to, if you choose as a family to do online learning, are you then, is that your commitment for the full school year, or is it just for a semester? Or is it for three months? Or how long is that commitment?
So I apologize, I had, I had a minor issue and I somehow I just got kicked out of teams, but I think I caught the right question. I had a panic moment too. I was like, whoa, wait a second here. So if you...
Yeah.
Real quickly, I think the question is how long are people asked to commit in an online approach?
Well, whichever approach they choose. You said they, they're supposed to, they have to stay with what they choose, but for how long?
Thank you for that clarification. A family can always, let's play it in this, in a hybrid approach, if a family wants to go to an online because the hybrid is not working for them, that will provide more flexibility, because the seat isn't have to be reserved, if you will.
So go in that direction, they can change anytime?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's going to be, it would be like changing from school to school. There's, you know, there's some pros and cons to that, but there is more flexibility to that. In order for us to ensure that there's a seat going from the online to, into the hybrid model, there will be some commitments there. So right now, we're thinking about when natural periods at the elementary, a trimester, or potentially a year. If you say that you want to stay in there for a year, then we're going to ask that. But likely, we're going to say, try it for a trimester and complete it to the trimester. Or if you're in the second trimester, finish that trimester out. At the secondary level, we'll be looking at semesters, and what is that option there? Because then you have different flexibilities in classes and master schedules and opportunities.
Okay, and so my other question, yeah. No, that, yeah, that, that answers that one. So it's basically if you choose online, you're choosing for at least a trimester if you're elementary, or at least a semester if you're secondary, if not a full year, but at least, you know, you know if it's really not working out, there's potential to switch. But of course, it depends on space available, is what I'm gathering.
Yes.
So Mike, along that line, on that, on the presentation, you have a slide and it talked about the online format, that there'd be like fourteen teachers that would be working collaboratively, and I'm, I'm not sure if you went into it or I missed it, it was a glitch for a minute, and so can you explain what that fourteen teachers thing was?
Yeah, so that was just an example of one of the work teams. There are fourteen educators that are working on the learning design approach. That's not about the online school. And so when we think about online, and this is that glossary of terms is really important, and I won't even say these are adopted terms, but I'll tell you the way that I think about it. Online is one set. So you still have a teacher that's working with you on a set curriculum, but you're doing all that in a virtual world. And then you have a hybrid, which I'm going to say is, folks call it distant learning or remote learning. So you're learning in a remote fashion, you're not inside the face-to-face, but it is connected to that same face-to-face instruction. There may be other opportunities too that are part of that, and so this is a great little segue into this. We may assign kids, if they're in an AP class, AP seminar time in their day, where they're, you know, not only, they're reading additional novels, they're practicing writing their exams. We may assign groups of students PSAT and SAT prep, where there's an online approach to that, because you have a computer. So learning will look differently in those remote spaces. In that space, you won't not necessarily have a classroom teacher that's facilitating this, this way. You may, because there may be certain teachers that are assigned in that fashion to work in and check and connect. And so that's that remote kind of hybrid approach.
So, so along those lines, and just for clarity about teachers and how, which teachers would be doing what? If you choose to be an online-only option, then you have a teacher that is specifically working with the online students only. They're not also teaching, potentially, they're not only also teaching the, that same class in person. So in other words, the online teacher is just with the online students, and then the classroom teacher may be doing some remote help, but is focused on the kids that are coming into the classroom. Is that correct?
I want to, there's, this is nuanced, so I want to make sure that I'm really clear, because I don't want to start a challenging. If I select an online-only option as a family, you are assigned a separate teacher. You don't have, you're not with, let's just say, I got my schedule and I'm with Mrs. Cobb next year, but now that I'm thinking I'm going to do the online option, Mrs. Cobb's still going to have a group of third graders that she is working with in an A B schedule, half of them A, half of them B. So Mrs. Cobb is not going to be your teacher.
Right. And that's, thank you. I wanted to clarify that, because I've heard some comments, this thing's been batted around by folks and the families, et cetera, that they were unclear how teachers were going to do it, and was it a completely different set of teachers, you know? So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then I have one other comment and one other question, and I'll start with the question, health checks. I know we probably don't know yet, because we don't know the requirements, but are you anticipating that this would be, is this part of the, the deal with not being able to have as many kids come into the school, because it's going to take time to get kids checked in in the morning? Or how is, how is that going to work?
Right, so we don't have that, we don't even have final guidance yet. And so there's all different ways to, a family can, I basically make a declaration, there's ways you can, some school districts are doing in large settings thermo checks, where they have thermo body scanners. We're not looking at that as an option. There are others that are lining kids up and doing individual scan checks and temperatures. We're exploring all of our options. We know that several different fashions, and there's nuance in there. Let's put our parent hat on, for example. If I forget for some reason, and I'm working, and I didn't make the declaration for the day, what am I going to do? Right? And so we've got to find a functional way, not only to keep everyone safe, but to actually implement it. So there's a lot more work that needs to be done on a legal front, on a practicality front, and then working with the health department on what is acceptable and what's not acceptable. I want to, before I, and I know you have another one, I want to just go back to that other question about learning and the teachers' assignments. When the Superintendent says, you know, we have to work with our T E A partners, we are, we're going to work with our T E A partners to say, so if this is the model and this is the direction, now we have to work on what are the opportunities and what makes the most sense from there. But we can't do that without the model. And so that's why we're in there. And then, you know, we've got to make sure that, you know, that we actually have staff that can physically do the jobs. That's the other thing that we all have to be worried about across the board. If educators, teachers, for some reason get sick, that's going to have a direct impact on face-to-face instruction. If they can't, because they are a high-risk employee, can't work on, in a, in a classroom setting, that is going to have an impact on our ability to provide direct instruction face-to-face. And so this is where we are now having to say, this model's starting to get clear enough, and then the board, you know, on the twenty-third will hopefully be in a place to say, we still need to see this, or yes, based on all the unknowns, continue to build an implementation plan of this model. And then that's, we have to work with our, our partners and labor to say, how do we functionally do this? And we're committed to do so.
Thanks. And then I'll just end my section with a little sort of caveat around childcare, no surprise, right? But, you know, childcare licensing ratios are, were not built to have school-aged kids in childcare during the day. And so many childcare, and I don't know if, if you've been working with, if O S P I has been working with D C Y F to try and figure out, you know, what we're going to be able to do to, to make that work. But usually, you know, childcare providers are filled with, you know, zero to three and four-year-olds, and then in the afternoon, when those kids go home, there's the school-aged kids that come. And if there are school-aged kids that are going to need to be there on A B kind of days, it's going to wreak havoc. And you don't want to set up a scenario where you're just having, you know, whether one of our partners, whether it's the Y or Metro Parks or whomever else, trying to set up these childcare facilities where we're just sort of moving kids around, but so you might as well have them in the classroom at that point, because they're just, you know, being moved to a spot where potentially they can't, you know, study or do anything else. So I think the childcare dilemma is, is going to be huge, and I think that it's a big piece of the solution. And I think that it's a big piece of the solution. So I just want to make sure that we're connecting and I'm working on that. So the decisions that we make around the AB schedule have, have results that are, are actually practical in the real world for the before and after school care.
So we heard from those folks, actually you're a guidance director, Bob, right? Reaching out to them early in the stage and saying, so if you remember, we, we actually asked a number of community partners, tell us pros and cons of these. And this is that engage. And what we heard is a couple of things, not only from our families, you know, childcare is going to be option. And that was really, there's revision. It's not to say that grades three through five, or even middle school or high school kids aren't vulnerable, but that childcare opportunity is, is something that we really had to change in that K2 approach. We also heard from them and saying, just from what you said, is we might have in childcare experiences, if we're able to licensure this, we might be in a place where we're going to have kids that are nine and 10, and infants in the same setting. And what they said very clearly to us, don't ask us to support kids with mathematics during that time.
Right.
Right? That's not a feasible opportunity. And so as you're thinking about those remote learning days and those opportunities, you have to find ways to help us support our kids. And that's where we, you know, when we think about what is a day in a life for a kid look like in a remote learning, they should still get out and do recess, even if they're in a remote learning set. We need to have dedicated time. It is not six and a half hours in front of a computer. Remote learning is, is there will be independent readings, there will be the things, they will still have to write and reflect. There may be online independent math through our work with iReady and reading elements and SAT prep, but it's not going to just be an expectation that says, you're, this is what your first period class is, and it's going to be a, a complete extension of that to the same level in the distance learning or remote learning. So we're hearing from them. And you're spot on. And this is not unique to Tacoma. And this is one of the challenges, there is not enough childcare in any of our communities. Doesn't matter if you're rural, New York City, Las Vegas, or Tacoma. And there are licensure challenges. And this is what makes this so hard, is is the schools are not operating in isolation and we don't get to influence everything as well. And so as families are out there and saying, look, we need more supports, we need them to also reach out and to, to our legislators and say, look, what are our options to increase opportunities for child cares to get up and running? What is resources to pay that tuition? Because those aren't there for the school setting.
Yeah. And luckily, I will say kudos to Pierce County, who has put $2 million of their COVID cares money into vouchers for families and subs and grants to childcare providers to help them stay afloat and get started in, to be ready for school. So thank you, Pierce County.
And Tacoma, and the city of Tacoma is
The city of Tacoma is voting on that too.
And, and the work that our partners do is, none of this is ideal. None of this is perfect. There is no perfect, but none of this is ideal. And it is a challenge. We are in a worldwide pandemic. But I'm telling you, our community and our county comparatively to what we're hearing from our other colleagues about even wrapping our end. And that's why it's so critical that we give them lead time and say, you know, here's the model. Now how do we functionally pull together to try to close as many of these gaps as possible?
All right, thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
A lot of the questions have already been asked. I did, and I think, Josh, you talked about the ELL or English learners, but I was wondering about Schoolology, is that the platform, the correct name? Wondering about, is there an opportunity for increased translation for students or for families? Like if parents are going to be able to access that? Just wondering about, and you don't, may not have that answer now, but just curious, like moving forward, if that's a possibility?
There is some flexibility in the platform for languages. I would say to you that we, and we continue to remind ourselves of this, we just did a, if you haven't had a chance to see our new website, talk about, you know, right in the middle of COVID, we also were pre-COVID doing a website integration and it's in there. And we still run into challenges with translations there. And so, yes, there's flexibility in the learning management system, but it will not, it will not meet all of our needs. And so we're going to continue to have to work on that. That's where the helpline, the translation helpline is, is still an opportunity. And then Dr. Hodge is going to start working really in this platform to say, you know, newcomers, newcomers ELL, they may have additional supports face-to-face in time. And it may just be varied as we go through, but translation will still be something that we have to keep right in front of us and continue to work to do a better job at.
And then the other thing is really more of a thought, because I know this plan is still, we don't have the full guidance yet and we're still in planning preparation, but thinking about contract, contact tracing, thinking about like, what is that going to look like? When you mentioned earlier about a teacher being out sick, like there, I just think that there's so many things that I know are really difficult for our families and community members to wrap their heads around. But this, to me, that there's the simple, it's a simpler equation of how many bodies can you have in one space per, based on these guidance, this guidance and this recommendation? And, and that is so limiting. And so I feel like there needs, I'm, I'm hoping that some of this information will help quell some of the maybe confusing, confusion, concern about that. I, I feel like there's just this resistance to an accepting of where we really are right now and where we will be in September. So I appreciate the presentation and the options that families will be provided. So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on that real quickly. This is, you know, this idea of cohorts, keeping kids in cohorts, it comes really from the guidance. And so when we talk about staff and I not be able to rotate in through different classrooms, we're going to try to limit that. There may be reasons why they have to. And there may be reasons why, you know, we make sure that we have the proper, always the proper protocols to that. But it won't be the same way it was in the past where you could just drop by, right? I mean, we, we can't do those things. And that's why when I say there's certain programming that may have to be suspended because that's the way that programming is delivered. And we might have to think about it doing differently. And it's tough, but we've got to keep in this worldwide pandemic, health and safety as the primary mission, and then design the learning program around those parameters. And that's really hard for us as educators and, and when you think about school, to take a step back and say, the health and safety has to be the number one priority here. It's always a priority, but that learning program has to be designed around this worldwide pandemic that we're, that the science is unclear about.
Ready, thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I think I'll piggyback off of Director Keating. And I'll be the curmudgeon. People are going to get sick in the fall. It just, it's going to happen. And so I'm interested, you know, the health and wellbeing of our staff drives educational opportunities for our students. We know that face coverings are recommended. When we think about our personal protective equipment orders, are we ordering surgical masks, N95 masks, bandanas? You know, I heard today that there's research coming out that says the virus, it is aerosolized, it's in the air, and it's five microns or less, which an N95 might capture most of it. So when we're thinking about the PPE purchase, have we gotten to that level of specification of what we're ordering?
So a couple of things, we're working with the Pierce County Emergency Management System and, and getting that first three months of PPEs out there. So masks are not recommended in schools, they're required, or some version of a PPE. And there's still conversations that are coming. And so we're following Labor and Industry and the Department of Health on the requirements of those masks. And so that's the short answer to that. When we talk about masks will be required. And, you know, you as a board, you're going to see a policy about what happens when you don't wear masks. And if there is not an opportunity and there's not a medical reason for you not to wear a mask, you may be required to take the online option. And that's, that's right out of DOH and OSBI guidance. So as far as the specificity of that, you just mentioned, Director President Heinz said, the science is changing quickly. We will follow the rules of PPE production, protection, my language is getting to me. We will follow the guidance of DOH on the PPE requirements for our students and staff. And right now, there's, the face coverings are there. We will have opportunities for disposable face coverings. That's what the current plan is and the current guidance is. If that changes, we'll have to adjust. And then the second piece to that is, is we anticipate that there's supposed to be a spike in the fall. That's why that continuous learning plan is so critical. Unfortunately, we just don't know what the elements have, or the requirements of that are, but we're building towards that.
And the expectation of students to wear face coverings, I would assume that's the same expectation for staff?
Yes.
And have we been in conversation with the TEAs and the other 10 bargaining? We have 11 unions that comprise the staff in Tacoma. So that the union leadership is setting the expectation that this isn't about a personal choice, this is, you got to come with a mask so that we make certain students and staff are all protecting one another?
Our staff is, the initial staff that have been on campuses during this, as the roles have changed, have been absolutely phenomenal. And we're working together to support each other. And, you know, it goes back to see something, say something. If you see somebody that's not wearing a mask, then ask them, you know, if they're wearing a mask. Because, you know, this is new to our culture and we have to help do that. We are, the team's starting conversations with TEA next, next week, I believe is the first scheduled ones, where we're going to start walking through these elements of the model and these expectations and what does that look like? To this point, they've been absolutely amazing. And we'll work to make those conversations as transparent as possible so that everyone knows, you know, no one's being asked to do something that they're not supposed to do and that we're working to support people's health.
And I'm assuming that the temperature check will include staff as well as students? That there'll be a screening to make certain that staff coming into buildings are healthy?
Yes.
Are presenting symptoms?
Yes. So one of the options for guidance of screening is a self-declaration add testation, if you will. And so there's a survey that you basically do as a staff member when you're walking into our buildings now, that you, you declare that none of these symptoms are there. And that's not uncommon around the private industry and stuff, but there is not a requirement right now that you actually do temperature checks on site. The requirement is, if you do not do that survey or staff does not, or if there is a concern, someone's exposed or not exposed, showing symptoms, that you can then have the opportunity to do temperature checks and further screenings. And then you have to find a location, just as we're talking about this, when you talk about space inside of buildings, we have to have a place when kids come onto campus and they do show symptoms, where they can be housed in there. We can't just put them in the classroom. If there's days and there's sniffles, right? I'm a parent, I've done it, varieties. You know, if your, if your child is sick, they need to stay home for their protection and for the community's protection.
And if staff members, particularly our hourly staff members who need to be present to be compensated, but are sick, have we thought about how that's going to work?
Yeah, we'll be working with each of the union labor groups to talk about those opportunities. There's guidance that comes from the state on labor and industry. We follow those guidance, those rules. That's the short answer to that is, and that guidance is changing. And as the science changes, we're getting updates. To be candid with you, that's part of the, the challenge where we have not gotten the Department of Health, is because the Department of Health has to work with labor and industry on the guidance of PPEs and those expectations. And so these agencies have to finalize their final agreements in order for us to apply them.
Okay. And my last question, have we thought about contingency plans? We got a head start on this in Tacoma Public Schools in March, when we had a few exposures that shut down five schools. So what happens the first time a student at a high school tests positive? Do we, are we shutting down your, and we're in an AB schedule and we've got students coming? Is there guidance out? Do we have some preliminary planning to talk about how long those, those, those buildings would be closed? And then what's the contingency plan again for our hourly staff that would not be coming into a building that would, we would, you know, for a short period of time at least would transition into all online if you can't physically show up at a building? Have we, where are we at with that sort of thinking and planning?
Yes.
Let me, I can say too, that Josh, that, you know, we have a committee with Shalay, our head nurse, that's working on specifically, you know, those things. And, you know, I can't remember what the name of the plan is called, the contact plan. And so, you know, again, a lot of that's being determined for us as far as what that looks like, because we're going to be in charge of our own tracking. We've got to track those cases and where they came from. So it is, that's why the, you know, you can't slip back and forth between A and B and so that we can keep track of, you know, what's your cohort group and who's in it. And we've got to be, you know, I think we did a good job considering we had absolutely no knowledge of what we were doing at the beginning of tracking. So, you know, that's one thing we think that we'll be really, really good at. Josh, I'm sorry, cut right into you.
No, just real quickly, I think that's, you know, the guidance has not been finalized. And so disease tracking has changed from, and it changed even when we shut down schools. We went down to shut down the whole school, maybe shut down the classroom. There's still the general guidance is 14 days, but we will be looking in, Carla, you were spot on. We'll have to finalize that. We don't do these things in isolation. We have to do them in alignment with labor and industry as well as the Department of Health. And disease tracking is not.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I've, I've got one more question, so maybe you can make the answer short. I'm just curious, with all of the, like 24,000 respondents, how many people were asking for a five-day-a-week face-to-face option? The data that I've seen suggests people are really uncomfortable being in public. I was curious though, circumstantially and otherwise, what that number represents?
We can't physically offer a five-day-a-week schedule with all of our students.
Was there an opportunity in the survey for respondents to indicate if they would like a five-day-a-week?
No.
Okay. I'm curious because I understand why we can't, but that doesn't make those hardships any less real for the families that are asking us to have a five-day option. So I'm just curious how many families that potentially represents. And I know it's not an issue of liability in the sense of, oh, just sign a waiver and you can come to school. And if, you know, families won't hold the, will hold the district harmless, this is about just meeting physical space requirements and how many people you can have in a building at any given time. But I would be interested to know how many families
Out of the 9,000 folks
Get that five-day-a-week option.
Out of the 9,000 folks that responded to the second survey, approximately 86% of them said that they were coming back or planned to come back to school in a hybrid approach in there, or an online approach. They would have planned on coming back to TPS in there. 1.5% said they did not plan to come back. And the other 11% said they were uncertain. Tonight's information will give them more information to decide those things. And so in a reverse is there. The last piece that I would like to just quickly remind folks is, that maybe thinking about is preschool. So preschool is still an option that we're working with, although we are going to have opportunities as we think about that and working with our families, where we may not have as many preschool seats. We might not bring on as many three-year-olds as we have in the past in order to serve the, the current four-year-olds and, and in different programs. We may have some three-year-olds, but we'll have to look at that in the total space opportunities. So we are looking at making sure that there's still preschool access.
All righty, thank you. Director Leon, your hand was up. Did you have another question or comment?
I'll just to follow up on one of the things you mentioned, President Heinz, and a couple of things. So, I mean, the disease tracking piece, as you talked about, you close a school, a classroom. Like if we are really careful about how we manage where kids are, so we'll know which classrooms they are, we probably should know exactly where they're sitting compared to other students. And then that's another way you isolate other kids that were within their half of the room or their immediate, you know, area of the room, if they're within that six feet or outside of six feet, but the next people over. You might track those people or quarantine them for a certain number of days before you let those folks back in, instead of setting that a whole school. So I think that's, those are all things that are being done in other countries. We can decide with guidance from OSBI how we might do that here. Um, and we can decide with guidance from O S P I, how we might do that here. Two other points would be, you know, as we are reinventing what school looks like. Like, uh, the, the evidence and the pros and cons around delayed start time for high school, middle school students. You know, kids aren't going to be getting on a bus, uh, on a, on a bus every day anymore. Less prep time if they're, uh, doing online school. They won't need as much preparation time to get to school. So, um, so it's not, they'll, they'll probably get a little more sleep in general, which is, which is good for their mental and physical health. Along with academic success, there's less of those extracurricular activities going on unfortunately. But that also was part of the reason why there's a lot, there was more resistance to not, uh, delaying some of the start time for high schoolers. That's something to just consider as we put so many pieces into, uh, the puzzle here as we figure out what schools look like. My last point is, you know, the federal, um, our federal funds, uh, that we get are about 38 million for our, out of our 500 million. Uh, I'm sorry, 38 million, not billion, um, out of our 500. And there's been talk from the White House that they may, uh, not be giving money to schools that don't open. But what does opening look like? And at some point we should, and our budget is on our list to talk about tonight. Contingencies for if we have some money withheld from us from, uh, from the federal side. If we don't open up schools in a manner which, uh, the president, uh, wants them to be opened. Um, that's obviously something, hopefully it doesn't happen, but I think it's something we should, uh, be thinking about. So, thanks.
I just want to make one real quick point for the community. Um, when we do, uh, the, uh, tracking or mapping of students. When there is, or a staff member that's been identified, we don't make that procedure up. We follow the Department of Health's exact procedures. And so if they change, they change, but we don't as an independent school district make up a, a separate practice. And so that's really important for families to understand that we would never want them to think that we were doing that in isolation. They, they provide us that specific guidance on how to do it and what are the steps? And we're very clear with our staff, that is the steps that we're going to follow.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and with respect to the federal funding, uh, Congress, it appropriates the money. And so that money has already been, uh, appropriated and authorized with a specific intent. So I think it's more political bluster. And in fact, uh, local school districts, local education authorities are the only jurisdiction that can open a school. So, um, so I, I mean, I would default to Roslyn, who is our, uh, budget guru. And I often say, I think local education, K through 12, public education is the most complicated funding system. Because of the blend of federal, state, local, and how you can use it. And I see her nodding her head. Uh, so I, I think, you know, um, we'll certainly communicate our concern about the rhetoric back to our congressional delegation. But I'm confident that as the appropriators, they'll ensure that the administration delivers that money as they intend it.
I can, uh, I can just fill in real quick, you know, uh, the Free and Public Education Act likely is not going to be discriminantly applied. Um, based on any particular political agenda. And if Congress wanted to make an adjustment to that, there's committee work and, and some adjustments that would likely have to go through. A pretty rigorous process before that impact hit us is my guess.
Yes. Uh, thank you. All right. Well, we're, uh, 95 minutes in and we have completed the first item on the agenda. Uh, superintendent, we'll move to item number 4.2, the bond update.
So it is time for good news, right? Let's have some good news. Go for it, Roslyn. Yay.
Yeah. It's been 90 minutes, so I'm getting a little punchy over here, but I do have, and, and I'll just say I'm going to apologize to everybody who has to go behind me. Because there's no way you're going to live up to this news. Tom, if you have an opportunity to pull up the presentation that was attached, that would be great. We did begin conversations in January about a potential refinance or a refunding of bonds that we had outstanding in the 2014 and 2015 series. Uh, those, those are the bonds that we purchased in the 2014 and 2015 year. And if you go to that next slide for me. We selected a team after a resolution was passed. Actually, we did two resolutions, um, but we, we passed some resolutions, giving us the authority to go out and do a refinance if the circumstances were right for us. And we, um, had a team of underwriters, bond counsel, which are lawyers that help us identify that we're within IRS guidelines and legal guidelines. And then of course, the financial advisor that works on our behalf to assist us. And, you know, we, we were looking at timing and trying to figure out, um, exactly what would be the right timing. And I know this is difficult to see on the graph, but on that top graph, what you'll identify is there's two black lines, one for 2014, one for 2015. Those are the rates that we received when we made those bond sales initially. And at that point in time, we thought, oh my gosh, these are the best rates we've ever seen. We'll likely never have an opportunity to refinance these. Uh, and so we have not looked at those for, for a considerable amount of time. But then in January of this year, it became clear to us that the taxable market, which we normally work in the tax exempt market. The taxable market had some really amazing opportunities that were providing us with lower rates than we had anticipated. And that maybe it would be a good time to look at some bond savings for us. Uh, so yesterday was a really long day. We did our bond sale yesterday. Um, I think that it's important for us to say, we've seen some significant volatility in the market. And if you can see on the right hand side of that graph there on that top graph, how the rates have just dropped significantly. That's good news for us. The lower those rates are, the more money we're going to save. And so when COVID hit, we had that weird little jog of, of rates. And we thought, oh no, did we miss our window of opportunity? And the answer is no, we actually have been put in a better position with the way that the market has recovered so quickly. So I'm so happy to report to you and so excited that the market was a great day yesterday. Historic lows on many of the, the bond sales that we were able to accomplish. And so, uh, everything appeared to be in our favor as we entered the market. It looked to be a good day. There were a lot of, um, a lot of investors looking for, for bonds and a lot of, um, a lot of, what's the word that they use? Inventory of bonds. And we were, we were working on our order. That's where we go out and say, here's everything that we have that's going to be for sale, for sale in our bonds. And our orders were filled three times over, which means we had three times as many people looking to buy our bonds as what we had available. We were selling around $366 million of bonds. And we had over a billion dollars of requests for those bonds. Which meant that we were able to go in and start negotiating down on individual series packages, even better rates. Than what we thought we were going to be able to get. So our end result, when it was all said and done, is a savings, a present value savings. Right? So that's savings as of right now, not what we would have in the future. Future value savings were different, excuse me, different. We saved $45 million for Tacoma taxpayers. And I mean, it's, it's almost an unheard of number. I can't even fathom that we've been able to save that much. But it's an incredible success for our taxpayers and it works out to several million dollars a year, each year for the next 30 years in savings. So, uh, I'm, I'm so excited about it. I just think what a great way for us to celebrate by letting you guys all know that this is, you know, this is. The best time we could have possibly done this. And, you know, I don't know what the market will do tomorrow. I can't imagine it's going to go any further down unless they're going to start paying you to issue bonds. But, uh, we basically got $366 million of borrowing for about a 2% interest rate. So, I mean, I'm happy when I get a car loan for 2%, but $366 million over a 30 year period. That's just, it's an incredible, incredible deal. So, uh, celebration to everybody who worked so hard on it, all of our, um, our advisors and our underwriters. And Rob Bryant did a great job and Carla was amazing and the board, thank you for putting us in this situation where we were able to go out and provide. Our taxpayers with this benefit.
Thank you, Roslyn, for just using sound advice and knowing when to jig and when to jog. And, uh, it is unbelievable how many factors go into making these decisions. And, um, you did an incredible job, so I'm so happy about your success. And, uh, I, you know, it's important that the public knows it just didn't happen. It talked, it takes a lot of planning. We were talking about this bond sale, uh, way before what we're going to do, before we even passed it. So, good job.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Um, I just have, Roslyn, can you? Roslyn, just for the sake of the public, can you clarify the, um, how these savings come about? Because I think folks might think that this means $45 million coming into the district's operating budget in particular. So can you clarify again that, that the difference between capital and operating and that, and the way that this becomes a savings for taxpayers? Not for the district.
Thank you. Yeah. So once we sold the bonds, um, what we do when we sell the bonds is we receive a bunch of money from those sales. And we put that money into our capital projects fund to buy buildings or replenish buildings or replace buildings or do major, major project improvements. Uh, and, and this circumstance then in our debt service fund, which is a separate governmental fund, different from operating fund, which is our general fund. Different from the capital fund, which is where we build the buildings. The debt service fund is where we actually pay for the principal and interest on our bonds. And in that fund, um, that's where this transaction occurred. So this really has nothing to do with whether we're going to get to build more buildings or anything like that. Or whether we get to buy more staff or more resources, we won't be able to use it for that. This happens just within the debt service fund. Our repayments in the debt service fund are driven specifically by a tax rate. So on your tax, um, on your tax roll, when you get your little green card in the mail, it includes.
Right? Property taxes.
Your property taxes, it includes that rate on there as part of that. And so what this means is instead of having to pay $450 million, now we only have to pay 366. Or I'm, I'm using the wrong, the wrong number of starting. It's 420. I can't remember what the number was when we started. I apologize. But we're at 366 now. And so that means that we don't have to tax our public by $45 million over the course of the repayment of the bonds.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? All right.
High five.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that good news. It's, uh, well done and, uh, thank your team on behalf of the board. We appreciate the, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, 4.3 is renaming Wilson and Jason Lee. Uh, the board has received a number of emails from community members. I know that our colleagues and other elected offices have as well. Uh, the board has, uh, existing policy for naming and renaming buildings and existing regulation. And we've asked the superintendent to walk through that process generally. And then, uh, specifically her recommendation for moving forward, uh, with renaming Wilson and Jason Lee. Superintendent Centorno?
Uh, yes, uh, we've got of course, two great principals at, uh, Wilson High School and at Jason Lee Middle School. And if you look at the policy and the, um, the policy is 6970 and then the regulation is 6970 R. And it goes through exactly what needs to happen. And so to have a principal that would stand up and kind of, kind of take, you know, take this process under their wing is great. And they have both agreed to do it. And so they are gathering people, looking at the letters that came, um, so that they can decide, you know, they can get a committee together. And it's in really, really good hands with both of those principles. So they're, they will move it forward.
And the, the board consideration per policy and regulation comes at the very end of the process. So the beginning is the, at the building level where existing staff and students and community members. Uh, and the committee, uh, where they seek a variety of input from community members. Not only on should the name be changed, but also, uh, what the name should be changed to. And after all of that important community work occurs, then there's a recommendation that's brought through the superintendent to the school board for consideration. Is that correct? I see general counsel also up here. Is that interpretation correct?
Yes, it is. So people who are interested in the names of either of these schools, uh, should reach out to either Principal Brandt. Or, uh, Principal Bernadette Ray, um, in order to be involved. And then they'll make the recommendation back to the superintendent and it will come to the board for a final decision. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
And I've asked both principals, you know, to, uh, to be honest with you, to take their time, to look at different ways they can engage. You know, there's some, everybody can't be on a committee, but this might be, I know we've been, you know, we've been surveyed to death lately. But this is a time when you want your alumni group and, you know, your, your community group, that your neighborhood group around the school to all have an opportunity to weigh in. So I've asked them to really look at different ways, especially when you've got two historical schools like that that have been around for a while. We want to make sure we do a good job of getting input.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have.
Vice President Cobb.
I just, uh, I appreciate you, um, I'll just say, I've raised this in our last meeting about communication. We get a lot of emails and it's hard to aggregate them all and deliver them when they need to get to another place. Cause there are literally a couple hundred on these topics. So I just appreciate you trying to, superintendent, trying to put the process in the hands of the school leaders. Um, and I understand the, the, the policy and the role that the board plays in ultimately just receiving the recommendation. But I just want to acknowledge, um, that I think, um, just in terms of the board's values, like we've all made it clear that we value. Racial equity, we value diversity, inclusion, all of those principles. And when members of our community feel alienated because of any aspect of how our institutions function. I think it's important for us to listen and to engage in the conversation. And I think in this, as you talk about alumni, not everyone's going to agree that the name can change. But I think it comes down to the community being clear about its values and, and. And us all just being open to change if that's what is necessary. So I just, in spite, in spite of the fact that the board just weighs in at the end and receives the recommendation. I think it's important to acknowledge that names signal values and the values that we hold. Are the things that guide us in our decision-making and how people get to show up in our community. So I think in, in spite of the fact that some people might say names trivial, I think names matter.
Director Leon, I hope your hand raised.
Thanks. Uh, I appreciate the superintendent bringing this, uh, through the process that we have already established. And I agree with Director Cobb's description of the importance of racial justice and institutional racism. And for people in the community and people listening, they may not know why this is being considered. So I think it's probably worth, uh, a brief discussion. One side of the argument is, I mean, one side is that these are historical figures that we've been having named in schools for a very long time. The side that wants to remove them is because of, um, potential evidence of mistreatment of Native Americans. On the Jason Lee side, uh, for a long term and on the Wilson side, potential, uh, or evidence of, of racist. Not just tendencies, but, um, institutional racism in the administration of President Wilson. So that can be debated by the community and that decision can be brought to us. But it's important people know why we're talking about this.
Thank you, Director Leon. Are there any additional questions or comments on renaming Wilson and Jason Lee?
I just have, um, I would just want to, um, thank, uh, Bernadette Ray and Kristi Brandt for taking this on. Um, and I have, um, great confidence in their ability to really listen to the communities of both schools. And I just, to me, it's a relief that, um, that they're leading this work. So I just want to, um, acknowledge them for doing that on the community's behalf.
All right, thank you. Director Bobbey.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to echo what my fellow directors have said. Where we've, uh, been getting a lot of mail about both of these schools. And, and we want to, um, thank those folks that have, have, uh, reached out to us. And, um, encourage them to get involved with, uh, at the local level with the principals. And, uh, we look forward to hearing what the community comes up, comes up with and we support your work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, and before we move on, this isn't directly connected, but, uh, and it's not on the formal agenda superintendent. At the last board meeting, uh, we discussed the ongoing relationship between Tacoma Public Schools and the Tacoma Police Department. And the board, uh, directed you to form a committee comprised of community members and stakeholders. To bring back a recommendation, uh, if the district should be in relationship with T P D and if so, how? And I know, um, we've all received communication, uh, from a number of people on that topic. But we also received a petition that was representative of a lot of our, our community's, uh, thoughts on the matter. And, uh, and that all is very important to this. And, and that all is very important to this discussion and, and the determination. Can you give us a sense for folks that are interested in expressing viewpoints now that this committee is being formed, the best way for them to go about connecting to the committee, providing input, potentially serving on the committee?
So, Malik is here and Malik has taken this on and he and Renee worked so successfully through the discipline, you know, through the discipline input that we asked him to kind of head this effort. So, Malik, will you give us an update, please?
Sure. And this is our Deputy General Counsel.
Sorry, Deputy General Counsel. Malik.
Yeah. So, just like Superintendent Santoro said, we're looking to implement a similar system to how we do with the disciplinary rights, which is to cast a broad net, really as broad as possible, hear from as many folk as possible. So, we've already identified the district staff. We're going to be devoting some of their staff time to work on the project, to collect feedback and involve really as many community members and civic organizations who are going to be willing to work with us. We have received, like you said, the group that filed the petition that's on the, on the public comments link. I met with folk from their group yesterday, I believe, or the day before yesterday. And we, they proposed something that makes a lot of sense, which I've already proposed to Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, which is that we give an update of where we are next week, next board meeting on July twenty-third. What you'll see between now and then is we've developed a survey and had it built by our good friends at the DART team, Mr. Zeke Edmonds and some of his team members helped us put together a survey that will be available for teachers. You may remember at the last board meeting, I think it was Director Cobb who had said, you know, let's make sure to include employees, teachers at buildings. That's going to be available for community members. Students will be able to participate. Parents will be able to participate. There was also a request at the last board meeting that we be able to identify by racial, by racial group, should participants be interested in providing that information. The good news is that's been done. We're testing it right now in a shell environment to make sure it has the data analysis capabilities that you all would like, so that you can be able to see how different groups of people answer different questions. So, that will be the first phase of kind of what that community outreach will look like, is giving people the opportunity to weigh in and a data weigh-in on the survey. Then, we also have a group of interested members of the public and civic groups, some of whom who have reached out to us affirmatively, like the group that put the petition in the other comments for today. Other groups who we have worked with in the past, like on the discipline rewrite. So, the plan is to reach out to them and put a survey out, promote it on our social media platforms all at the same time, to really get as much feedback as possible. Then, the next phase is to work on the policy work, which is to give these same interested community members, civic groups, the ability to weigh in on what the policy aspect of this will look like. So, one thing we know for sure is that the relationship with TPD and the contract and the responsibilities of both parties are going to change next school year, no matter what. Reason is the HB twelve-sixteen that passed, which requires a number of changes to take effect next year, will require these changes anyway. No matter what we decide, it will look different. And so, community will be able to give feedback, respond to draft policy that we hope to put forward over the, in summer. And really, like I said, cast this wide of a net. What I told the community group at our meeting yesterday, was that we're not looking to create artificial barriers for people that want to weigh in on this important topic. Anybody who's willing to devote their time to tell us how they feel about it or show us research that they may have gathered that they would like us to consider and bring to you, those people will be able to participate. That information will be put out. We put out the survey and when we start our social media engagement to bring people to this topic. Dan Vopel is also one of the folk who has agreed to devote some of his own staff time to help us getting the word out. So, look for another update on July twenty-third, should Superintendent Santoro agree that I can have a little bit of time to give you a little update. And you'll see where we are there. One of the comments that we also got was that a lot of important topics have been raised since our last meeting. It will help community to know that some of the things you've told us to work on, we're still working on, even if it isn't at the top of the agenda or the very first thing we talk about in these meetings. So, it'll help us give you an update of both on the progress, the process, and let people know that the work is still going on, even if you don't hear it at the top of the board meeting, every meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benner. I, I know the board really appreciates not just your leadership, but, but the way that you are guiding this process. It's been thoughtful. It's inclusive. It's an important topic. It is an issue that we need to address in real time and it's complex. So, it's going to take some time, but, but thank you. I'm confident that Vice President Cobb and I, through the agenda-setting process with the superintendent, will be able to find some time on the July twenty-third meeting. I think we're all very interested to hear what's transpiring because there's been such great interest on the part of the community and we're hearing so many important perspectives. So, thank you for your work on that. And Superintendent, thank you. The board has tasked you with a number of things in the last few weeks. And, and thank you for understanding the seriousness and how the board is truly trying to listen and be responsive to the community. We appreciate the decisive action that is occurring. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Item number five, public hearing, five-point-one, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. I believe, Ms., you know, you're going to give us an update and then, then we'll learn if there was any comment that was, that was submitted. And Superintendent Santoro, I see your hand up.
I, I had asked if Lisa Ke, Lisa Nolan, not Lisa Keating, Lisa Nolan could give just a brief update about where we are with the paras because I know it's one more thing that the public's really, really interested in. Is that, if you have time. I know we're late on time. If she can do it brief, I know Lisa can be brief.
I think it's important. Dr. Nolan, would you provide us with that information, please?
Absolutely. I think that the school's structure update that was provided earlier tonight really speaks to the complexities that are going into the decisions being made for the service delivery model for the fall in order to ensure that there's health and safety for our students and for our staff. That, as you have learned tonight, hasn't quite been finalized, but there's a direction in which we're going. So, some next steps for paraeducators as this model is defined and we have clarity around the needs, we'll be able to engage in our next steps. Already, just as a quick update, we did lay off eighty-six paraeducators that were on the personnel recommendation for, for last school board meeting. That number has shifted to eighty-two. And what's important about that is the fact that we, we have needs that will need to be addressed and the, the number will shift as we address the needs within the schools. For example, one IEP student is back in the mix and so, a paraeducator needs to be assigned to that student. And then, we were looking into the layers around seniority with a few of the other paraeducators. So, that's an important feature as we consider our next step. As the need arises, we'll be able to look to our section twenty-three recall process and be able to identify next steps to, to recall through that, through that process. So, first comes the clarity in the service delivery model and the understanding. And, you know, it's fair to say that that could be in the coming weeks. But, already, please know that for those who have been laid off, we have their personal emails. Our HR partners contacted them for personal emails and phone numbers to get the best contact information. And we are pushing out notifications when it comes to any position that is open, that they would have the qualifications to apply for. So, our partners have engaged network and it's not a passive format, like usually it's incumbent upon employee to check out the website, where we will do our due diligence to ensure that they have active communication around positions that become available. I want to be clear, there haven't been many positions that are available and the few that have been are solely specific to specific programs and program needs. But, nonetheless, that's an example of some next steps in how we will engage in order to support our paraeducators and ensure that they understand what opportunities exist for them to apply for as we follow the section twenty-three process for recall. And I think that's a, a quick enough update. We have contingencies. We need to define that plan and we need to understand what the needs are in order for us to actively engage in position control.
I think, Dr. Nolan, are there any questions or comments?
I just have one-
Vice President Cobb?
Just one quick one. Dr. Nolan, can you state again how students with disabilities needs will continue to be met in light of the changes that we've made to our paraeducator workforce at this point? And how disabilities were considered on the front end of making this change?
Thank you very much. Our student services team, under the leadership of Dr. Rita Chodry, examined each IEP to make a determination which IEP requires one-on-one paraeducator support. At that time, we based it on a projected model that we had information about, which in some aspects remain the same today as we continue to evolve and develop plan, which is based on a cohort model, again, for the health and safety of, of students and for staff. So, if a student with a required IEP one-on-one para will be on campus two days a week, we built the model for that IEP para to be there one-on-one, providing support to that student while they're on campus and in need of that support. Now, if we shift, there was some discussion about a four-day-a-week model. The moment we shift to that, we will contact the one-on-one para because that's the student, that's the person who the student has already, has already built a relationship with. It's in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement that we would, in fact, have that para continue to support the student while on campus on those additional days. And then, as we build these, the classrooms, and if we discover that a self-contained classroom has added, an added need for para support, or there's IEPs that drive a one-on-one para in those classrooms and that's a four-day-a-week model, then absolutely, we will adjust very, very quickly to ensure the proper level of support for that student. So, the students, that, that's been a theme that I have noticed when there's been comments, you know, concern for our most vulnerable population. And I get that. I respect that. I understand that. And please know that that data was analyzed very, very thoroughly based on the information that we had at the time. And in some cases, some of that information remains the same that, but we analyze that data to ensure that the proper level of support would be in existence for the student who would be on campus. And we will shift of it and respond when that need becomes more clear and we identify that we need to have a paraeducator onsite to support it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? So, I had a question, when you said, or a clarification, Dr. Nolan, you referenced section twenty-three. That's a portion of the collective bargaining agreement?
Yes. And, well-
Can you clarify what that is?
Yes. My apologies. Sometimes I get caught up in the language that I speak all the time. It, it defines what happens in the case of a layoff in the recall process. So, we'll follow how it has been designed. We have met several times with our paraeducator leaders and we, we have more meetings on the calendar. We'll continue those conversations and our objective will consistently be to uphold the guidelines that are set forth within our agreed-upon collective bargaining agreement.
And that collective bargaining agreement, that's the mutual commitment, right? It's a binding contract that both sides agree to. And so, when you're making decisions about a reduction in force, seniority or, or how that occurs has been negotiated by the para-union and the school district? And then, we just follow that existing process that's outlined in the contract?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think of it as a partnership. We, we both, both have responsibilities, the union and the district, to uphold the provisions that are set forth in there because we agreed to it. And, and we made a commitment that we would uphold those guidelines.
And I know that there was some concern about perhaps the district had not, through the reduction in force process, that there was a grievance for an unfair labor practice. Has that case been heard and has a decision been made?
As, as far as an unfair labor process, practice being imposed upon the district?
So, so, so I had heard that that had, that there had been a grievance. I want to respect the integrity of the process, but I also want us to understand that there have been some very serious allegations made that have followed the rightful process. And I, and, and I'm unaware of, of the district having been found in violation of any, any violation of our collective bargaining agreement. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
And that's part of the part of the oversight. You know, I think sometimes it, the board gets lumped into the district and kind of in an us versus them, but the board's primary responsibility is fiduciary. It's to reduce risk and liability to the district. And so, we have to make certain that we're compliant with our contract. So, anytime we hear from any of our bargaining units concerns about an unfair labor practice, the board takes that very seriously. We work that through our general counsel because we want to hold ourselves accountable to the standards that are created in those collective bargaining agreements. And so, if there's information to the contrary, we would be obligated to share that, right? If there had been a finding, we would be obligated to share that. So, if people are concerned, to date, there have been no findings related to reduction in force of the paraeducators. General Counsel True Blood?
That's absolutely correct. The, the para-union has filed a grievance at this point and we're working through the internal grievance process through the CBA. I have asked multiple times for the paraeducators to let me know their attorney's name because I always want to try to resolve issues in a mediated collaborative way, but they have not provided me with their attorney's name.
So, again, if there's evidence, the board is part of our oversight responsibility. We are obligated to follow up on that. So, I, I appreciate, and General Counsel True Blood, if you could keep us apprised as that, and, and Dr. Nolan, as that unfolds, that's important information for the board to have.
Absolutely. And again, there has been no unfair labor practice filed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you. Dr. Nolan, thank you for providing the update. I believe now we're ready to move on to-
Budget presentation.
Item number five, public hearing, five-point-one, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. Ms. Medina?
Thank you so much. So, good evening. We're here to present the budget this evening and this is our first run at it. We do have a requirement by law to provide a hearing and we have in the past done a hearing the day that we're adopting the budget. The board has thought that that was somewhat of a disingenuous process because it didn't really allow for public input at that point in time. And so, we bumped that up so it was two weeks prior to the actual adoption to give time to hear public commentary and so that if there were things that the board really felt needed to be adjusted based on that, that we would have a quick opportunity to make any, any of those corrections or adjustments and to ensure we had time for feedback review. Because this is a public hearing and we've never done this format before, generally speaking, we would provide an opportunity for people to come and comment publicly at the hearing. We're going to allow comments to be submitted for one week prior or post this meeting. So, we'll accept comments through July sixteenth on this and we'll make sure that all of those comments are shared with our board members. And I'll give you an, an email address here shortly to do that. So, if you could pull up my presentation, please. And just a quick reminder that this is our first, our, excuse me, our second year of our two-year cycle. This is our review year of the budget development cycle. We do a full process in year one and in year two, we do a review that just makes adjustments based on whatever state impacts we have. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. And here in the right-hand side of this slide deck, you will see that those blue, those blue boxes are what we would do in, in a normal first year and the purple boxes represent what we're doing in year two. We've also aligned ourselves to the legislative cycle because they're so, we're so dependent upon the legislature for many of our revenue sources. So, that helps us plan a little bit better. On the next slide, just to give you some brief overviews of what our goals are this evening, we're going to share what budget interactions we've been working on. We'll talk to you briefly about our alignment to our strategic plan and then we'll present the recommended budget for all of our funds, including a four-year outlook. Next slide, you'll see a summary of budget interactions. So, these represent some recent interactions that we've had. We've brought the budget to the board a couple of times through the year. We, we did- We, we did a, a development of budget principles, guiding principles, excuse me, back in January, that helped us define what it was that we should be looking at when we're developing our budget. And we just finished a series of six budget, interactive budget webinars. Those are posted out on our website. I, I believe you can access them at tacomaschools.org/budget. You'll see that tonight's hearing has an opportunity for you to comment. You can send comments to cfo@tacoma.k12.wa.us. And I'll repeat that again at the end of the presentation. And we are trying to bring forward our recommended budget on July 23rd. If you go to the next slide, this slide represents the strategic plan initiatives that we have in our, in our district. And you can see the historical trend of how we've invested our resources in those goals. I, I think that some of the highlights, the majority of our investments occur within the academic excellence area. And the newest goal that we've added is operations. We used to call it support services in previous budgets, but it has now become one of our goals. So that's good information to have. You'll notice under the early learning, it was a question asked if we're investing less in early learning. This is not a representation of necessarily investing less. I think that our budget has gotten bigger, and the amount we're investing stays relatively the same. And so the ratio changes, and it appears as though we're investing differently, although we may not be. If you'll head on to that next slide for me, this is where I'll start discussing a little bit more about the actual budgets that we have for you to review in advance of our adoption. We do have a fund system, a governmental accounting system that incorporates funds. Each of these boxes represents its own checking account or savings account, whichever one it is. In the general fund, that's where we do our operations. In the debt service fund is where we pay for our principal and interest on our, our bonds and service any of our debt. The associated student body fund would be our fund that the students run. So these are student resources that are then allocated out by the students through the, you know, student body leadership that's happening within each building. We have our transportation vehicle fund, where we are able to buy our yellow buses. A trust funds are funds that we're receiving on behalf of others. They're not really our dollars. We don't get to decide how they're utilized. We're just holding them in trust for other organizations or for certain scholarship programs, as an example. And then we have the capital and technology levy. We'll have a budget prepared and visible for every one of these, except for the trust fund this evening. And one more comment that I'd like to make is these funds have, each fund has its own specific rules about how we're able to spend within them. We can't take money out of the capital projects fund, generally speaking, and move it over to the general fund, as an example, to fund whatever activities that we're looking for. So if you'll move on to that next slide for me, please. This is the summary of our general fund budget impacts. So you'll see our revenues are anticipated at around $496 million. And that's an increase of $23.6 million. I will prepare on the next slide a little bit of more detail of that. Our expenditures are increasing to, by $20.8 million to $503 million roughly. And then our fund balance drawdown will be $6.4 million, which is actually $2.8 million roughly, less than what we utilized last year in our budget. On that next slide, I'm not going to go into detail on this slide. It is available out on our board agenda, if you want to, if you wanted to review this. It's also available out on our budget website on that same tacomaschools.org/budget page. The highlights here are, under both the revenues and expenditures, the first line item indicates that we had $8.5 million of increased capacity. So we budget a certain amount of money in anticipation of revenues or expenditures that we may be getting in. Because of the CARES money and what may happen with federal stimulus dollars, we've budgeted an additional $8.5 million of anticipated revenue and expenditure. The expenditures go along with the revenues that we're anticipating. So that is part of the increase. It's a significant part of the increase. And if we weren't going to include those, then our revenues would only be increasing by around $15 million roughly. And the fund balance column, it lays out what it is that we'll be utilizing our fund balance for. In this year, it is $2.7 million less than we utilized last year. $2.4 million of that is for carryover. Those are carryovers that are very specifically identified. Curriculum and instruction is another one that will be, and let me just paraphrase on the carryover for specific allocations, things like CTE or our learning assistance program, or, you know, some, some private school money that we have to carry over for specific circumstances. And then the $2.2 million is our curriculum and instruction allocation. And finally, we're using only $1.8 million of our fund balance to balance out the budget. So that's money that we're taking out of our savings to balance. If you'll head to the next slide for me. To give you some context of how we intend to, where we get our money from, this is our breakdown of all of our different revenue components. Our state represents about 74% of our budget at about $368 million. Our local levy is about 15% of our budget, and the federal is eight. The other two columns there, local non-tax and other revenues, are relatively small in comparison, but that would be everything that's not covered under our regular apportionment through our tax receipts and through the federal government. If you'll go to the next slide for me, please. This is how we spend our resources or anticipate spending our resources for the next year. If I just highlight a couple of quick areas, we have salaries for certificated staff members. Those are our teachers, nurses, counselors, et cetera, all certificated staff. And classified salaries, in addition to our payroll and benefit taxes, that make up 83.5% of this budget. So that's a considerable amount of our budget that is dedicated to resources of investing in staff. And then we have our contractual services at $53 million and supplies and materials at $28 million. Contract services sounds like a lot, but we do a number of different things with contracts, like our utilities, our first student vendor, the purchase of meals, cost of, of goods and services for meals, things like that. Our next slide is a four-year budget outlook for the general fund. So all of what we've talked about so far has been general fund. I'll break into the other funds here at the next slide, but just for some contextual components there. And you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, there's a key of what fund I'm talking about here. The, the four-year plan is actually required by the state now. And what we have been doing is a five-year, we personally do a five-year plan, where we're looking out to see what our impacts might be over the next five years. And we've incorporated many of those things into this, this budget. What you'll notice on the bottom of fund balance impact is that we have built out budget here so that it balances out. We're required by law to prepare a budget that is balanced. But balancing can also mean that you're utilizing fund balance. Here, what we've done is we've reduced expenditures in order to meet our revenues, because that's what we're anticipating will be the, the case moving forward into our next years. So I think that it's important for us to draw that out, so that people have some context. We're not balanced out for the next three years. We don't have it all figured out. We will likely have expenditures that outpace our revenues, and we will likely have to make budget reductions for years to come, because our state revenues are not going to be increasing at a rate large enough to help offset the expenditure impact. If you'll go to that next slide for me. I, I know I harp on this every time I talk about our finances, and I just feel like it's such an important component. We hear a lot of conversation around fund balance and the utilization of fund balance. Our fund balance is set by policy at a 5% reserve requirement. It's, we, we ensure that our budget expects that we will have that 5% reserve available to us. What are our reserves used for? We use them for emergencies. We use them for extraordinary events. And recognizing that we are currently in an extraordinary event, this event is a little bit different in that it's a long-term impact. When I think of emergencies, I think of an earthquake as an example, where we may not have the ability to access the building or our regular resources, and we still need to make payroll. We currently have enough reserves that we would be able to make approximately two payrolls, which would be one month's worth of payrolls in order to address any kind of significant emergency. We also utilize them to help keep evidence of our strong financial health. We just went through bond rating activities with our bond sale that we did. And that is always a conversation, a heavy conversation with our bond rating agencies. They have an expectation that we're going to be able to maintain reserves and that we're going to be able to have ongoing businesses, business availability. And so the expectation by them is that we're going to maintain at least our minimum 5% reserve. The Governors Finance Officers Association, which is sort of a benchmark organization for us, recommends a 60-day reserve requirement, and we're running closer to 27. Our internal goal is around 5% to 8% of our budget being available, or, excuse me, our state savings being available. We have a lot of cash flow issues as the year goes. We don't get money in evenly every month. We get apportionment in some months, but not others. We get tax revenues in some months, not others. And so it's important to have that cash available in our savings account to be able to weather those months where we have less resources coming in. So then, when the resources do come in in later months, we have that, we can, we can pay that back. And that's also in, in an instance, so we don't have to borrow resources. And in the 2021 plan, with that $1.8 million that we utilized to balance our budget, that leaves us with what we're planning to have, around 5.7% of our reserves available. So still a relatively thin margin, but above the 5%. And it's important to note that we planned for a $30 million fund balance. We really don't know what that's going to be for another month or so, until we find, we close our books, our fiscal year ends August 31st. And so we're planning in anticipation that $30 million is what we'll get. It could be higher, it could be lower. It just depends on where everything works out in the end of the year. If you'll head on over to that next slide for me. This slide identifies our various other funds. So we have to build a budget for each of those funds. When we represent our budget to the board, we're asking them for expenditure authority. You'll see under our debt service fund, where I indicated that we use that to pay the principal and interest on our bonds, that we will be asking for authority to spend up to $60.9 million roughly. In the associated student body fund, $3.4 million. In our transportation vehicle fund, $780,000. That includes replacement of six of our buses. And then capital and technology levy, an anticipated spend of $129.5 million roughly. The next slide then details out the four-year projection. We utilize prior spend and revenue projections in order to project out in these particular funds, as well as then for the capital and technology levy. We use our, our, we're actually just holding steady on our expenditures, because we're pretty sure we're going to be expending about the same amount of money over the next four years. And then, just a quick highlight of, the next slide for me, please. I did indicate that our preliminary budget is available at tacomaschools.org/budget. Or you can go to the department's page and select budget. And it should take you there. Because this is a, a hearing, and it's a little different than what we would normally do, and you haven't had a time as the public to digest this budget and provide a written commentary in advance, we did provide you the opportunity to have one week of comment back to us. And that can be done through cfo@tacoma.k12.wa.us. And our budget adoption is planned for July 23rd. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the budget? Vice President Cobb?
I'll start with a really soft one. Rosalyn, can you say what kind of buses, those six replacement buses, will be?
There's actually a board agenda item that'll be coming to you shortly that will, I, that will spell it out. But there are special education buses internal to the district. And there, it, we have a replacement cycle. So as buses fall off of our depreciation schedule and become too aged to be on the roads and potentially become a safety hazard, then we replace them with new buses. So I can't spell out exactly what they're going to be yet, because we're still in the process of getting quotes, and, and we'll have those available to you in the next, probably by the next board meeting or the next one after that.
What are our options these days? Do, is it diesel and propane, or what, what kind, what are the?
I think that the intent is to buy a couple more propane. And then, what we're finding with our diesel, we've recently found a diesel report that the clean burn diesel engines that we have access to actually produce better emissions than our, even our propane buses do. So we'll be putting in an order for a couple of those. And one of the buses that is a little bit of a, I think it's the short bus, the littlest bus that they, we can buy, it's called the Class A bus, that only comes in a gasoline.
Okay. Then the other thing, just more, just clarification on, on two things. Early learning expenditures, I've heard you say a couple of times that we're not investing less. It's just the amount of staying steady relative to our whole budget. I think, can you say something about early learning? No, I'll just say it. I'm not going to act like I want you to. So in the context of early learning, I think there's a perception that it's funded and provided for the same way that K-12 is. So just for the public, can you, can you say a bit about Head Start funding and E-CAP funding? And then where the balance comes from? And what the expectations from the state are about the level of, about whether or not districts provide early learning?
I can, I can give it a shot. So we did just do our budget interactive webinar that was specifically on early learning. And so if, I would really encourage people to go back and just take a quick look at that. You can fast-forward through some of the beginning pieces and hone in on more of the detail, just specifically around early learning. But we do have funding through Head Start, which is our federal program. And, and those are resources that have to be used in very specific ways, generally to support low-income families. And then we have an E-CAP program, which is through the state. That's very similar to the Head Start programming. We then have special education programs. There's several different kinds. We have a peer model program, which is where you have a, a special needs student, and we, they have a peer, and they're learning and growing together. Then we also have an extended-day special education program. And then from the funding of those, our special education is primarily a basic education. So we get resources through the state, our apportionment through the state. But for the peers, the peers are actually levy. So that's a separate component. And, and we probably invest about $3.5 million altogether in our preschool programming out of the levy. So it's a, it's a good portion of our preschool funding. And I think we have about $14 million in total of preschool funding. And then the other one is our Title I preschool, which is funded federally as well. I don't know if that spoke exactly to your question.
I just want the point to be clear that Head Start is federal funding, and it's limited. E-CAP is state-funded preschool, which is also limited. We have special education preschool that's entitlement and we provide for. And then Title I, we can choose to use some Title I money for early learning. But beyond that, the state doesn't fund for, through the K-12 basic education allocation, doesn't fund general preschool opportunities for all kids. I just want that to be clear, as people reflect on the proportion of the budget. Okay, and this last thing, it's not really budget-specific, but it's more related to, it's just a general question that is connected to the bond savings that you mentioned earlier. I think the sentiment out there is that property taxes have increased this year related to school district funding. Can you say something about, and if you can, that's okay, about the sources of the increases? Because my understanding that some of that comes from the state property tax for education. But how much of that increase that our local taxpayers are seeing is as a result of increased obligations to the school district, local obligation?
So if you recall last year, when we were building our budget, one of the things that was really challenging for us is that the state limited our levy and how much we could actually collect. And when they brought our levy down, they raised the state portion. Then, when we got to this year, in the 1920 year, that was 1819, I'm sorry, I'm confusing years, but it's, you know, that was 1819. And when we got to 1920, then what we were able to do is collect. So we had our levy in our state, we were able to bring our levy back up just a little bit. So they are seeing an increase. It is related to the fact that there was this, I, I call it a switcheroo. I know that's not a very technical term, but there was a switcheroo around how the state provided funding for the levies and taxes. The state did increase the state rate that they are collecting. They lowered ours, but then they raised ours back up. And so that raise this year is the one that people are probably coming back to, but it's all based on what the legislature provides. And it's all within $72 million that the voters had approved for our budget.
When will they start to see the future savings as a result of the bond sales? That's my question.
Yeah. I think that, that, that really will depend. That's a great question. It'll really depend on what happens when we go out to sell the $535 million of bonds that we have. And so what, what we'll have to identify as we're working through that transaction that is supposed to occur in the fall, from what the voters approved in February for the $535 million, is we have to identify, if we can- is we have to identify, if we can, longer-term, longer-term bonds usually have a higher cost associated with them because you're borrowing money for a longer period of time. So we may be able to move some of that longer-term resources forward and have more of the short-term bonds without costing the taxpayers anything now. So they may not see a physical savings, but they may see a long-term savings in the fact that we no longer have to pay for more interest over a longer period of time. I hope that makes sense. I mean, it's, in my mind, it's this perfect visual. But, you know, I'm not sure I'm expressing it to the, to the layperson.
I think we can just keep talking about it.
I'm sorry. I'll try to, I'll try to draw it out.
Ready, thank you. Director Keating, did you have any questions or comments on the budget?
I just want to acknowledge and thank the opportunity of lengthening public comment. Because I, prior to being elected, like that was something where there just wasn't a lot of time for community input. So I just want to thank you and your team for making that happen so that the community, one, because I think it'll help people better understand the budget, better understand like how funding, where funding is allocated and how it is and isn't allowed to be spent. So I just want to acknowledge and thank you for extending that opportunity.
Thank you. Director Baumbrandt, did you have any questions or comments on the budget?
Well, I have a couple of comments. Well, actually, maybe a favor if you could. Director Cobb, had you explained early learning so well, I think I thought I'd ask if you could also take that same approach with special ed. Because I think there's a real confusion in the population out there about, why don't we, you know, really, because things are mandated and why don't we cover it, et cetera, et cetera. But they don't, there's not a realization of that the money isn't coming from the feds or the state. But I thought maybe you could do a better job of explaining the hole and how we fill it.
Well, yeah, okay. So special education has a lot of, a lot of rules and a lot of requirements. And we actually have a number of federal and state guidelines that we have to follow. And in addition to that, there's the Free and Public Education Act, as we've talked about once before already tonight. All of these things apply to our special education population. And what we do have is a state allocation that comes to us through apportionment. We also have a state allocation that comes for students who have an IEP, an individualized education plan. We get some federal resources for our highest-cost students. And there's a formula that's provided by the state that helps us identify what students will be eligible for those. That's called the Safety Net Program. And then we also put about five, this year we've budgeted for $5 million of levy resources. We budgeted for about that last year, but we ended up spending about $7 million of levy.
So, so my, my understanding though is that the feds have all these recommend, are these mandates, as do the state, but they're unfunded mandates. And so when they come down, we actually aren't given the funding necessary to cover all the requirements. Is that correct? And that's why we have to go into the local levy and dip in, dip in there. Is that part of the, part of the answer?
Yeah, yes. And I'd say we have a lot of unfunded mandates. So, I mean, the requirement is that we're providing the most appropriate resources for all of our students. And in some cases, that costs more than we're receiving in revenues. And so that's where we have the levy that helps to bolster that. And realistically, what that means most likely is that the state probably isn't funding enough of that portion, or that the federal government is not funding enough of that portion to assist with the needs of the students that are actually out there. I think that another complication to that is, you know, there's a limit on the amount that the state will fund. And that percentage is like, I think, 13.5%. And we're actually closer to 14% of our population. So when our population exceeds that threshold, we now no longer have those resources available. All of that, all of the resources associated with those particular students is now at the district's responsibility. And, you know, kids don't come in neat little packages and needs are not based off of percentages. And so we have a responsibility to our students. And, you know, when we talk about justice and equity, then this is an area where we have to make sure that we're providing for those students in the best way we possibly can. At the same time, that there's a cost implication to that. And, you know, we want to be mindful of that. So it's a, it's a delicate balance and it's a challenging conversation because we would love to provide resources for, you know, every possible thing under the sun. And those aren't necessarily available to us. So we have to make, we have to make good choices with those resources, too.
Thank you. Did a nice job. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Director Leon, did you have any questions or comments on the budget?
They've been, they've been answers. But I think I appreciate your discussion, Rosalyn, about what an emergency is in light of our reserve funds, what we can envision needing that money for. There's a lot of comments around the pandemic is an emergency. Yes, it is, but it's, as you mentioned, long-term. And this 5% fund balances for other more acute, unable to pay payroll, as you've mentioned, and other things like that. So I think it's important people know that that extra 1.5% we have above that also is stretched out over several years in our budget, in our budget-making. And that, that may not continue to be there. So thanks for explaining all that.
Thank you.
Ready, thank you very much for the presentation. So we'll have a week of comments for the public to submit, two weeks for the board. If you have emails after that, one week formal public hearing submission, you still can email the board with questions, concerns, and we'll seek to clarify. I appreciate, the budget was one of the board's top priorities for the year. We went through budget cuts the last couple of years. And I think because of the complexity of both the funding source and the nature of the reduction, it became apparent to the board that we needed to elongate the process to try to be more, in more dialogue. So people asking questions, us clarifying. And I think it's been demonstrated this year in the strangest of times. So thank you. I know when the board met and set the priority, none of us could imagine that it would have all been done virtually. And that adds time. So Rosalyn, thank you and your team for putting in the extra time. And I think we've had a much more transparent process. It doesn't make the budget any less confusing. You know, people ask us, well, we just passed this $135 million capital bond. How could you have a deficit? Well, because we didn't get enough money from the state for special education services and we can't use capital funds to fund those basic education needs. It's really complex. Thank you and your team continue to get better at explaining that. And I'm packing it. And I think the policy that we recently adopted that's going to drive the budget process is going to continue to pay dividends. This was the first year we both created it and tried to operationalize it in a COVID environment. And I'm confident that this is going to continue to evolve in a way that is beneficial to the Tacoma Public Schools. So thank you and your team. Superintendent Centurno, thank you for your leadership on this issue, knowing that it was a board priority for the year.
Thank you. I'll give a shout out to Kristen. She's on tonight as well. Thank you to Kristen Bell and the whole budget team. They've been really amazing.
And congratulations on the bond. That was great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on in the agenda to item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board.
There's a, Director Heinz, there's a budget hearing, public budget hearing. So that's still 5-2, a public hearing for the budget.
Okay, so.
So you.
I pointed to the 2020, 2021 budget. And we, is there anything else that we need to note in addition to how people can formally submit the written comment to the CFO@k12.wa.us?
I think it's, we have one all standpoint. Do I, do we need to do anything? No, we have one person who has submitted a comment for, to go along with this, for the public budget hearing now. One person. I just wanted to note that we have a letter attached to the agenda from Beth Sawyer regarding the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board. Please note the alternate protocol. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board during a virtual meeting held under the proclamation by the governor, amending Proclamation 20-05, 20-28, Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act, follow these steps. Prepare a written statement that would be attached to the board agenda and meeting minutes. Because this will be a public document, it is recommended that you prepare the statement in a separate document using an application such as Microsoft Word. At the top of the document, please identify yourself and the subject matter, a title, for your statement. Please do not include your phone number, address, or email address unless you want that personal identifying information included in the public record. Submit your written statement via email to the school board secretary 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting. Statements submitted after the deadline will not be considered at this session. Statements should be emailed to tbati@tacoma.k12.wa.us. Typically, the board allows up to three minutes for you to share verbal comments. A three-minute verbal statement converts to approximately three to 500 words or up to two pages double-spaced. Please limit your written statement to this guideline. During the meeting, the superintendent will read into record your name and the subject matter title of your statement. The superintendent will not read your statement aloud during the meeting. However, your statement will be linked to the agenda so that members of the public will be able to read your statement. Your, your statement will also be linked to the meeting minutes for future reference. Members of the board will also review your written statement. The superintendent or her designee will follow up with you if action is needed. Superintendent, would you please, I believe we have a number of public comments submitted for this evening. Would you please read the name and the title of each of those comments?
Sure. I'm going to start with just the title, Paraeducators. We have several that have submitted comments or letters for Paraeducators. So I won't say Paraeducator after each name. Here are all the Paraeducator names. And I do apologize for mispronunciations. Patty Alicia, Brandy Blount, excuse me, Blount, Blount, Nathaniel Woodsmith, Elise Woodsmith, Lynn Hughes, Sharice Hayden, Tiffany Moser, Gail Abbott, Desiree White, Noelle Boitano, Lisa Emmett, Kaylee Blood, Benjamin Summerhour, Kathy Stretman, Caroline Brandow, Ruth Ann Newman, Rick Teague, the Teamsters Local Union, number 763, Rick McDonald, Shannon Myers, Deborah Gabbert, Carrie Madden, Mike Madden, Linda Atkins, Jenna Smith, Stephanie Han Wagner, Remonda Breed, Rebecca Janing, Angela Phillips, Larisha Calley, David Loughlin, Carol Eckert, Charlie Wade, Jerry Wall, Jessica Hildebrand, Sandy Anderson, Donna Dean Wright, Kim Nichols, Susan Clouda, Margaret Connor, Therese Bell, Deanna Western, Catherine Nigg, Leanne Smith, Kathleen Bach, Amy Graff, Amanda Moss, Elizabeth Wall, Under-School Startup, Comment School Year Startup, Michelle Beckham, and Carissa Guest, Under the Contract with TBD, Aisha Klobb, Latasha Palmer, and then Director Heinz mentioned the No-Piece Collective that submitted a petition, a letter with a petition with signatures. That's all.
Ready, thank you, Superintendent. The board appreciates you receiving those comments. Under Essential Matters, 7.1, Approval of June 2020 School Board Meeting Minutes.
I move the minutes.
I second.
Superintendent, you are still muted.
All right. Got it. All right. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the minutes of the June 18, 2020 study session and June 25, 2020 school board meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 7.2, Personnel Recommendations of the Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve?
I, I move the superintendent, I mean the, God, I'm tired. What am I moving? The personnel recommendations.
I'll second. Thank you. Dr. Nolan.
Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors approve the personnel recommendations to the superintendent for the July 9, 2020 school board meeting.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0. Item 7.3, Approval to Purchase Springboard Curriculum Materials for the 2020-2021 School Year.
I move approval of item 7.3.
Is there a second? Thank you. Dr. Garcia.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of springboard curriculum materials before the opening of the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $220,000, including sales tax and shipping, funding source, CNI, and basic education funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Got one. I'm sorry, did I hear, Dr. Director Leon?
Yeah, I've got a comment. I think as we look towards either buying new curriculum or it's brand new or re-updating curriculum that we already have, try to talk to or convince or look for these vendors that have curriculum that is easily adjusted for remote distance learning. How we can do that, putting gentle pressure or just, you know, switching vendors if needed, if we feel like it's in the best interest of our students, in the new environment we have as we look to all the curriculums. Thanks.
Superintendent Centurno.
Ms. Farah, will you address that issue with the springboard? I think they've already made that, they've already made that change.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. So, thank you, Director Leon. We are purchasing both the digital and the consumable resources for students in grade six through 10. We are moving towards digital in any of the curriculum content areas that's possible. Although I just want to say that we do see value in being able to allow students to leverage consumable materials, too. There are students who do better with a book or being able to do annotating in a text. And so we want to have both for our students to be able to provide them what is best fitting their needs. So we, you know, moving to a one-to-one platform next year. We know that many of our students will be able to access these digital materials through the LMS. So that's an exciting thing for us to be able to do. But the books that we're purchasing through Springboard usually are about three years before they make any addition updates. So we aren't purchasing a lot of them, but we're purchasing enough that students who need them and want to be able to use them can. And then we can use them in the coming years. So we're being fiscally responsible in that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rahar. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0. Item 7.4, Approval of Addendum to the Veneer Construction Management Incorporated Contract. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the addendum to Vener, Vener Construction Management, Inc., contract in the amount of $1,100,000. Funding source, February 2020 capital bond.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I just want to note, this is the first project that will get underway as a result of the overwhelming support from the community. So that's very exciting. It's cool to see, and for that Downing community, they've waited an awfully long time for this to happen. So this is the significant first step to make a new building a reality. So very exciting. Right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0. Item 7.5, Approval to Negotiate an Award Design Bid Alternative Method Contract with Corsmo Construction for Downing Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
I second.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
You're muted.
Can you hear me? Just wanted to give some quick background information on this project. We have not received funding for the 2020 bond. I believe the bond sales will commence in October 2020. However, there's extensive loan process, procurement process that happens three to four months prior. So this is what this item is. So the public's aware, we have not received funding yet. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award contract with Corsmo Construction for the design-build alternative method for the Downing Elementary replacement project.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item 7.6, The First Reading of Policy 2022, Electronic Resources and Internet Safety. General Counsel True Blood, could you give us a high-level overview of what this policy covers?
Sure. The credit really goes to our Chief Information Officer, Ed Garcia. But anticipating the expanded online environment of next year, we both recommend that the board review this policy and provide feedback before a second reading. The policy is designed to help educate students and staff on the safe and proper usage of electronic resources. And it complements our Policy 6973, The Acceptable Use of Digital Resources.
Thank you. And I believe it has implications for our distant virtual learning.
Yes, and especially to promote internet safety and appropriate online behavior of staff while they're in the online environment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have one comment.
Cobb.
I have one comment about a cross-reference. In reading the language of the proposed policy, there's some references in there that make me think of technology literacy as a basic education goal. And since that's referenced in the Basic Education Goal statute, I think that might be a good cross-reference to add in there. I think it's, I know this one because I live in one, but it's 28A15220, I mean 210. But I think that'd be a good reference.
You amaze me. I can never rattle off RCWs like that. My brain just doesn't work that way. But that's a great reference. We'll be sure and add that. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? So this will be Director Leon.
Question, just, I think there was a previous, before COVID, there was a, we had to get parental permission for teachers to contact students via email or text or emails ideal, what we're doing. Now there's no, we don't have a need for that consent sign because this is really one of the major ways we're connecting with students. Is that correct?
Well, you know, we intend to still have a kind of a global consent going into the 2021 school year to make sure that parents understand some of the limitations around mask wearing, around the cohort system, around athletics. And so we'll likely also put in a reminder about some of the safe online practices into that universal consent.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? So this will be an action item at our July 23 meeting. So if you have any questions you need clarified, please reach out to General Counsel between now and then. Item 7.8, First Reading of Policy 0110. Pardon me. Item number 7.7, The First Reading of Policy 2023, Digital Rights and Media Literacy. General Counsel True Blood.
And as in the last policy, this is also a joint effort with our Chief Information Officer. And you know what? I'll just pitch it over to you, Ed, to describe this one.
Sure. Good evening. This is, digital rights is what used to be referred to as digital citizenship. So students' education on safe use of technology online and media literacy being the ability to interpret the information that you find online and to disseminate that and basically figure out the truth by using critical thinking.
Thank you. Are there any initial questions or comments on this policy?
I just have one comment. I really appreciated this policy and the framing of digital literacy because I've heard educators over the years talk about digital literacy. And so I just appreciate that this is being embedded in a, in policy.
Thank you. And this policy will also be on the agenda for July 23rd for us to take action on. Item 7.8, First Reading of Policy 0110, Temporary Modifications to Policies and Regulations for the 2020-2021 school year. General Counsel True Blood.
And if Assistant General Counsel Malik Benro is here, he has been taking the lead on this and doing fantastic work. Thank you so much, Malik, if you want to take this one.
Oh, sure. The Office of the General Counsel recommends the board review the proposed policy 0110 and provide feedback before a second reading. If I could give you a high-level overview, this is a policy that is a starting place for a number of changes we're going to see next year in the 2020-21 school year, which will have a policy or regulation impact, but will be temporary in nature. So you've heard a little bit about some of the digital rights and electronic resources. Some of those changes for next year, we expect will continue year after year after year. The new way of thinking about electronic resources will continue beyond the COVID pandemic. This is a policy that more reflects those temporary impacts on policy and regulation. So things like requiring that students will wear face covering, a screening procedure before students enter the building, the superintendent's authority to close down a school building or classrooms. Hopefully, those are things that will be temporary and will only be in place for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you. Are there any initial questions or comments from board members? Right. And again, this will be on the July 23 agenda for us to take action. Item 7.9, First Reading of Regulation 1114R, Board Member Appointment Process. General Counsel True.
Did we miss one? President Heinz? No, I did. I was jumping ahead. Sorry. You're correct.
I tried to miss one, but then I corrected myself.
Can I? I thought we were to the resolution, but no, you're correct.
I think we're back on track.
I'm sorry. Before we move on, I did have one question about the temporary policy. I apologize. Is this, as I reflect on all the changes that are coming up and what we've done so far, I wonder if reference here needs to be made to grading. I, we didn't talk about, we haven't talked about that since we adopted the temporary grading policy for the end of last school year. But we haven't really talked about grading in the context of these options and in the context of what, how the school year will look. So I don't know if it belongs here, but if it does, maybe in the second reading, some, I don't, or what we would say about it here. But I felt this is a question that came to mind in thinking about temporary policies.
Certainly. One of the things I'll note is if you look at the, towards the end of that second paragraph, that's really talking about this being one of the policies where we were, we're going to have to revisit this. As, sorry, Dr. Garcia mentioned earlier when you talked about reopening schools, we don't yet have all the information for how things are going to look like next year. But we did want to give community and the board a heads up of some things we know for sure we will have to do. So we anticipate that as the summer goes on, that there may be things that we add to this. You'll also note that for the areas in this policy where we don't have a great level of detail for exactly how that'll look, that may also be something we go in and add additional detail as we figure out exactly how that's going to look. So we can take a look at if there's something broad, perhaps, we can say about what the grading policy might look like. And then if OSPI hits us with something specific and concrete, what we're required to do around grading, we can certainly run an update to make it consistent with what those guidelines are.
And I just would like to add that I think we're going to see some guidance come in at OSPI Continuous Learning Plan 2.0 that we're going to be required to adopt. You as a board are going to be required to adopt that plan as well. So the guidance is supposed to come out, the template for building a plan next week. And then after that, we will be bringing some recommendations. So you'll have some time to process grading, both in the hybrid model as well as in the distance learning. At a bare minimum, if we didn't do anything, we would go back to our current status quo because the grading was an emergency for the last school year only. And so you will have a chance as a board to re-reflect on and saying, what did we learn? What does that mean insofar as the OSPI guidance in the template? And what does that look like in our Continuous Learning Plan 2.0 that you'll be required to adopt?
All right, thank you. And as we cross the three-hour threshold, back to 7.9, First Reading of Regulation 1114R, Board Member Appointment Process. And I will note that we had this teed up after a couple of appointments. And then, given everything that happened after the first of the year, we lost sight of it. So we're bringing it back. And General Counsel, would you give us an overview of how we've come to have this regulation?
Well, I was considering putting some fine print in there saying that we would not accept resignation of a sitting board president. But we did work on this back in November, which I guess was some foreshadowing. We've had the opportunity of appointing two great board members over the last couple of years. We did it first with Director Leon, and we used substantially this process that is now here in this regulation. And then when we went to do it again with Director Von Bright, we kind of sat back and said, is there anything we want to change about the process? And so after Director Von Bright was appointed, President Heinz and I, and also with the help of Board Secretary Tanya Beatty, tried to just document what we did in case we needed to do another appointment in the future. And unfortunately, we do need to do another appointment coming up within 90 days of President Heinz's resignation. So this is the process that we essentially used with Director Von Bright, and we'd appreciate any feedback on it. Well, typically, we don't bring regulations to the board for approval. But because this is around such a significant board matter, we wanted to have the transparency and visibility.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Typically, the board deals with policy and the superintendent deals with regulations. I do think we have created a best practice of a template so that it's not recreating the wheel every time. Are there any initial questions or comments? Vice President Cobb.
I thought it was me. I think that it does a good job of representing the process, generally, the process that we've used in the last couple of cycles of appointments. One thing that stands out to me is just the length of the interview. I think that when we first needed to appoint someone on my, during my time on the board, it was Director Leon. And we got a significant number of applicants. And so there was some balance that we tried to create around the time. Speaking with lots of candidates and the time that it would take to speak with them all. And I think that having gone through this process twice, if my colleagues can sit through it, I lean towards having a longer conversation with potential candidates just to be able to get into a little bit more nuance about their understanding of the role and their expectations and what they hope to accomplish in their service on the board. So that's the only thing that stands out to me as a bit of a lesson learned in wanting to have a bit more time with each candidate.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Director Keating.
To build on Vice President Cobb, I think having come from a place of running for a position versus an appointment, there are a lot of things that I would also really welcome a longer conversation because there's a lot of pieces about these roles and being on a board that the public don't actually understand. And I certainly didn't understand much of the nuances as a candidate. And I think that the things that, that I thought a board director did and could do prior to being on the board, I think that it's really important to be able to highlight those pieces and also make sure that any candidate, that they know what they're getting into and that also there's a clear understanding of the role. So I welcome long conversations, and I'm long-winded. So I think that'll be helpful.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Vice President Cobb, you're muted.
Just to put a finer point on something that Director Keating just said about the role, I've found in the last couple of years, it was just clear that, like the misconception about the nature of this, of our role. Like, I think people think that we get paid some crazy amount of money when really it's a glorified volunteer job. I think people think that we each have offices at Central Office, and we have staff that supports us as board members. And that's not the case. Many of, most of us have full-time jobs in addition to this. So I just think getting into the nuance of the role and just, I think, what are some real true structural limitations with how school boards are constructed at the state level? Just the nature of that volunteer capacity, the expectations, though, that the community has for time and communication. There's just some real structural problems that I, I don't think we've figured out how to tackle completely. And it just creates a reality of the tension between what you want to accomplish as an individual and as a collective in terms of really giving the community the sense that we're working on their behalf and all that we do. But the real challenge is with the structure of school boards by design that limit the way that we're able to conduct ourselves, I guess. So all that to say, I think in this process, I just hope that we're able to have a good back and forth with all the candidates who apply for the position to give them a good sense of what they're getting into, but also to give us an opportunity to gauge who they are.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? We'll move on to item 7.10, Approval of a Resolution of the Board of Directors, Tacoma School District Number 10, Calling for a District-Wide Extension of the Emergency Closure and Suspending Policy Rules and/or Regulations Due to COVID-19.
Do you want? Want to move it?
The superintendent recommends the board approve Resolution,[1677.14]
The superintendent recommends the board approve Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2085, calling for an extended district-wide emergency closure and suspending policies, rules, and/or regulations due to COVID-19.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I move.
I motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. General Counsel Trueblood, could you give us an overview of what's in it and what it does?
Yes, so this would be our third resolution, just acknowledging that we are in unprecedented times and that there are certain things that we need to be able to act quickly to do. This resolution does not take away the board's power. It does not grant the superintendent unfettered power to do all kinds of different things. What it does do is, first off, it helps the district's purchasing ability. You saw that there were still some contracts that were on the agenda tonight. We have normal policies and procedures to follow for contract approval, but that means we have to wait for a board meeting. When we can, we do, as we did tonight. But when Rodslum's team is trying to purchase computers for students, or masks, or the protective equipment, we want the flexibility to be able to do that to get ready for the school year. And that's one of the things this resolution will allow us to do. The resolution also makes clear that we're still in Phase 2, we're still under emergency orders, and that schools are closed. We've had a lot of community members still looking to try and use our schools, and they're not open. So we're being very clear as well that during the summer, we're still in an emergency status. It extends until September 10th, but we will have to bring a resolution before September 10th about opening school for the school year. So this resolution should give us enough carryover time for the board to act in August to remove the emergency closure and talk about what the 2021 school year should look like. I also checked to see what some other districts are doing. Seattle is extending their emergency operations for the summer. And we're gonna keep in touch with some other districts in Washtas to see what other districts are doing. But again, this just, this gives us the flexibility to continue operations in Phase 2.
And it appears consistent with the governor's extension of his emergency proclamation, which our proclamation is, is based off of, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. The governor extended today the proclamation around open public meetings and public records until August 6th.
Okay, thank you. Director Von Bright, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem in, with the resolution. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the timing all the way through September 10th since, since I actually went back and looked at the original, it's referenced, it's the Resolution 2074, which actually says in detail what this all involves. And it talks about, you know, the superintendent, et cetera, having, you know, to be able to, you know, open schools, close schools, et cetera, et cetera. And since we will have some time between June 20th and September 10th, obviously move to open schools, it seems like we should probably have an end date that's more consistent with schools being opened already. So my suggestion would be, based on what we learned from the separate superintendent's presentation on school openings this evening, maybe I recommend that we either change the date to the first day of school, which is September, I believe it's September 9th, is that right? It's the first Wednesday after Labor Day? Anyway, whatever is the first day of school, I haven't seen the calendar, so I'm not 100% sure. Or we could, you know, make it at least for that day, and then if, once we pass the school opening process two weeks before, then maybe we can send it. I just think it's, because teachers are gonna need to be going into schools to get their classrooms ready, and it just seems like odd to be in an emergency, emergency status at that point. So that's just my thinking.
All right, thank you, Director Von Bright. General Counsel, is there, can you address that? Is there a need for us? Would this negatively impact teachers going back to prepare for, for the fall schedule?
No, provided that we give clear direction to teachers and to principals. As we've done during our emergency status, we've given direction about when students can go into schools to pick up items, when teachers can go into schools. The reason I set it to September 10th was that was when we had a board meeting, the next board meeting scheduled. And if we have another board meeting in August that sets forth a new resolution for the 2021 school year, likely it will be enacted before September 10th, before this one ends. But if we wanted to change it to September 9th, we, we could have a motion to amend the resolution and change it to the 9th.
Okay, and I do believe we're scheduled to come back for a business meeting on August 20th. That's when we're anticipating taking the final vote on whatever the reopening options will be. So do you recommend that we keep the September 10th date, change it to the September 9th date? Or is there opportunity to come back on the August 20th and amend the resolution if necessary? What's the, as our General Counsel, what's the best course of action?
I think duly noting Director Von Bright's excellent point, I think that the board will have the opportunity to clarify operations, starting with the beginning of the school year, September 9th on August 20th. So I'd recommend leaving it as is and making sure that we follow through on August 20th.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate from Director Von Bright, what I hear is clarity that the board is not abdicating responsibility to the superintendent, but we're creating through this resolution a little more nimbleness for the district to make business decisions in real time, especially absent consistent board meetings. Will not be, after our meeting on the 23rd, we'll be off for a month. And inevitably, in this ever-changing environment, the superintendent may need to take action to procure PPE, computers, other necessary materials so that we can reopen. Director Von Bright, is that?
Yeah. Absolutely. I, I just wanted to address more the optics of it sounding like we were abdicating the opening of school to the superintendent, and I wanted to make sure that that, folks knew that was not the case. But we wanted, you know, provide every opportunity for the superintendent to be as flexible and nimble as she is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments on the resolution? Right, so I, just to clarify before we take the vote, we're gonna vote as is. We're not going to, you're not offering an amendment. So the resolution is through September 10th, 2020, with an understanding that if it needs to be amended during our August 20th meeting, that the board can take action at that time.
Correct. And would you like a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
President Heinz?
Aye.
Director Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Cobb, I'm sorry. Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Von Bright?
Aye.
And Director Keating?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0.
All righty, thank you. Item 8.1, Report to the Board Galt Update. Superintendent.
So we've asked Chris Williams to unroll the history of our possession of Galt. He's ready to tell you about the last 10 years of ownership and beyond of Galt. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Actual slide deck presentation. So I don't know if I can top RCF all this news on bond sales, but I have good news. We're finally at the finish line with the intergovernmental transfer of Galt to THA. This has been a very long process for the district. It's been a 10-year process. I believe Galt was first established by the district in 2010. We're very excited for it to once again become a thriving asset for that community. Next slide, please. So THA has done a tremendous job on engaging the community. And these are just a list of some of the partners in which they have engaged. They've conducted a survey in which they've had over 150 respondents that provided feedback. In addition to that, they've interviewed 14 predominant community leaders on what priorities they would like to see for their space. In addition, they've also had focus groups. I believe they've had two with over 40 participants. I believe that occurred on June 16th and June 23rd. And they have intention of actually having additional feedback with subcommittees on those priorities. Next slide. So envisioning the future, they received tremendous feedback. And what the community truly values is the rich history of Galt. And Galt truly becoming a thriving asset that truly benefits the community. THA has intention of developing multi-tiered income housing with a focus of having spaces that are utilized for learning. Some of the feedback that they got from the communities, they would like to see potentially a child development center, or culinary arts, or even a play area for the kids within that community. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? We're gonna be coming back to the board on August 20th for the final approval of transfer of Galt. This has been a 10-year process, just wanted to say that again. We're extremely excited to be bringing that to the board on August 20th. We plan on closing with THA by the end of this year. Some of the things that they're doing currently right now is they're finalizing the due diligence process. They are securing the site. We understand the challenges with securing the site, it's something we've dealt with over the last 10 years. And they're gonna continue to engage the community after this process ends to finally develop that master and that truly sees that asset benefit the community. And I believe any, open up for any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one quickly.
Vice President Cobb?
Mr. Williams, do you know of the 150 survey respondents that look like the lists of community representatives or mostly organizations? Do those 150 responses include folks who are not connected to the organizations that were listed on that slide, or was it? Okay.
It was like the extensive list. I just, I would just put a few of them on.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Well, this truly is good news, and the East Side community has been exceptionally patient. I know that this has been an issue complicated by the fact that the building is jointly owned by the Tacoma School District, or had made, jointly made improvements to the building via the swimming pool that was jointly invested in by the City of Tacoma, Tacoma Metro Parks and the school district. And it has become dilapidated over the years. But I know, you know, the community really values the property. And I think the Tacoma Housing Authority has demonstrated that they are very good at listening to the community and creating space that is truly usable in a way that's meaningful to the community. I know I've driven by Galt at least once a week, I'm on the East Side. And I do appreciate, Mr. Williams, that the, the maintenance team has continued to keep up the field. I know that that gets a lot of use and then appears to be mowed every week. So I think that that helps people to feel a little more optimistic about what the future could hold. I know that it has been challenging to try to secure the building and that we've worked with TPD to try to keep it as safe, but that there have been squatters and vandals, wire thefts, all sorts of things happening there. And so this, thank you for getting it across the finish line, or almost to the finish line. It's been challenging, and, and I think this is an important next step. And I'll look forward to taking formal action on August 20th. Vice President Cobb, I see your hand raised.
And just in talking about keeping the field maintained, you can't, can't miss the opportunity to thank the Scheit family too, who's adopted a spot outside of Galt, and they keep it looking really nice too, so just wanted to make sure to give them a shout out too.
Yes, absolutely. Any additional questions or comments? All right, I think that's a positive note to end on. All right, that brings us to the announcement of future board meetings. We'll be back for a business meeting Thursday, July 23rd. And then the board has our annual fall retreat scheduled for Thursday, August 13th. I believe that's set to occur at 8:00 a.m. There'll be more details to follow in terms of how we can accommodate the Open Public Meetings Act under emergency proclamation. And then while it's not posted, I do believe that the board does have, as I just referenced, a business meeting scheduled for Thursday, August 20th, which will be the only business meeting of the board in August. Typically, the board only meets for one business meeting in the month of August. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. With that, we are adjourned.
Scott.
Director Keating.
Um, I do have a final comment. There was a lot of scrutiny about my absence at the last board meeting and a significant amount of viciousness that I received in personal messages through social media, email. And it was really shocking because I was at my mother's dying bedside, who died the next day. And what I found really shocking is this entitlement and willingness to dehumanize those of us that are sitting in these positions trying to make really difficult and complicated decisions and not giving us the grace and courtesy of one, being human, and two, that we are not actually paying attention and listening and deeply engaged. And I really was taken aback that, that because of what was happening with my family, that I received that kind of viciousness. I've missed one meeting since being on this board. And I was really floored, and it really disappointed me in our community and disappointed me in just the level of humanity that we're extending to people that we are entrusting in elected positions. So I just felt that it was really important for me to acknowledge why I wasn't there. And at the same time, I'm conflicted because I don't feel I need to justify why I was there. I don't feel like I need to have to explain that because I am still fulfilling the duties that I was elected to do. So I just wanted to put that out there formally and thank my colleagues and Carla and your entire team who have been extraordinary in support. So I just want to hopefully give our community a moment to pause. When you're frustrated, angry, and I get there's a lot to be frustrated about and a lot to be angry and scared about, but how we treat each other, like you, that's not how we want our children to treat one another or how we want our children to be taught how to be in community. And I hope that that is, will be the lowest point of my service in this role. And I hope that we can actually look at ourselves and our behavior to determine like how, what outcomes do we want and at what cost? So I just want to close with those statements. And thank you, President Heinz, for the opportunity.
Thank you for sharing. I'm sorry you had to experience that. Well, I think it's, that's a good ending piece for us all to reflect on in this environment. How do we wanna communicate with one another? So appreciate you sharing that experience. Appreciate everybody tuning in. The owner, are you saying something?
Yeah, I was trying to save one more comment if you have a moment.
Sure.
First of all, I'm very sorry, Director Keating, about what you went through. I do just want, I wanted just to make sure everybody knows the board and the superintendent and their staff are still actively working on evaluating what institutional racism and equity looks like throughout our, our educational system. And that also on the positive side, that tomorrow is the pride parade celebration remotely being done. And that our equity for LGBTQ community is also important, of course, as it is for the color of your skin. So that's all. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Good night.